Pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Fire evacuation announcement. There you go. That's the one. In case of fire, there are two ways to exit the chambers. To my left, exit through the council chambers door, turn left, and walk down one flight of stairs and out the building. Or exit the door to the rear of the chambers. But in either case, once out of the building, walk a safe distance away from the building. Thank you. And we have roll call, Mr. Secretary.
Charles Durin is absent. Charles Ladd.
Here.
Nikla Fekes not here yet. Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Ken Nelson is absent. Linda DeGray.
Here.
John Petronella is absent. Garry Mel Salazar is absent. And Richard Suzak is here.
You make the ask.
I'd like to make a motion that we seat Linda DeGray as the chair for this evening's meeting.
Second.
All in flavor? All in favor?[86.32][86.32](laughter) Okay. There you go, Madam Chair.
Gee, thanks. Okay. Approval of the minutes for May 9th?
I move to approve the minutes of May 9th.
Second.
Any corrections, discussions?
I did not find any.
There are none? Take a vote? Okay.
All in favor?
We're all in favor?
No.
All right. Oh. Three. Three, one. Three, one, zero. Approval of...
About three, zero, one.
Three, zero. I'm sorry.
Three, zero, one, yes.
No.
I was not voting.
She's not voting. Yeah, because I abstaining because I was not here for that meeting.
Right. Okay. I can't count.
How many do we got?
All right. Approval of May 23rd?
I move we approve the minutes of May 23rd.
Second.
Any comments, discussions, corrections?
They all look good again.
I do have one. Of course. Page eight. That second paragraph, second sentence, Commissioner Steele stated that the health district was at the ART.
Who's Commissioner Steele?
Yeah, who's Commissioner Steele?
How many Suzak?
Not sure. No. So. That was... Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Steele.
Oh, it was a town employee. Yeah.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Okay.
That makes more sense.
Okay. All right. I wasn't sure who, but unless he wants to become... Okay. Any others?
Nope.
Okay. Proven minutes? Four...
Favorit?
Yes. Four, zero, zero. Okay.
Five.
Oh, five. Why am I counting four? Ginny, you weren't here a few minutes ago. I'm so sorry. Okay. I'm not counting. I'm done. Okay. All right. Sorry. I don't do this very often. Sorry. Okay.
For the public hearing, if you want to...
This here is a time for public participation in the meeting for planning and zoning. We welcome comments concerning opinions and concerns relating to planning and zoning in Enfield from anyone who is present, provided that no one may discuss any matter of business that at this time is already elsewhere on the agenda, any matter that is part of an open public hearing of the commission, or any matter where a decision of the commission may be pending. Does anyone in the public like to speak? Anyone in the public like to speak? Anyone in the public like to speak? Hearing... No one wants to come forward? I'll close that portion of the meeting. Okay.
Bond release.
Bond release. Public hearing 2479 and public hearing 24...
Twenty-five, twenty.
Twenty-five, twenty-six. River Overlook and River Meadow. Issue of pavement and road acceptance.
I don't believe Mr. Papas is here. Is he here? No. Okay. So, this was presented to you at the last meeting, and I apologize that I was away. But basically, we are trying to come up with a scenario where we could get these roads paved. The Papases are very adamant that they want to get it done. They want to get it done as fast as possible. You know, we've looked into surety bonds, basically, in the past. I don't know how we came up with a cash bond for a road improvement. We've never gotten cash bonds for road improvements. It's very rare. So, they would like to utilize the cash once they put up the proper surety bond and the developer's agreement so they can pay the paving company. So, we've come up with the scenario. It was with town attorney, myself, and Assistant Town Engineer, John Kabibbo. You know, they've gone through a lot through the town. They appealed twice and won, so that delayed their actions. I do believe that they are honest and that they truly want to finish this project so they can put it to bed. And we are trying to find the best way so we could get the town secure in what's happening, as well as put a road in for the people that are already living out there with... The road right now is like 10 years old, and it's just the base course. So, we're just asking for your approval of the sequence of events where we get the surety bonds, make sure that the developer's agreements, which should have already been filed, but apparently have not, we'd just like them just to go through that process, and then we could give them a cash bond release. Meanwhile, we'll have that surety bond. So, I...
And the developer's agreement.
Right. And the developer's agreement. And should you approve this, I would ask if we would, rather than have to wait for them to come back to ask for the cash bond release, I would ask if you would be willing to allow the town attorney to move forward with the cash bond release without coming back to the Planning and Zoning Commission? Because they literally have the paving company on call right now. So, as soon as we get this paperwork in order, we could get this road paved and all of the other improvements that are required to get in.
Because the sequence of events that you're talking about are outlined in our memo of May 15, 2019?
Yes. The last memo you got, which was May 15th. Basically, they finalized the developer's agreement for both subdivisions. And then they file the surety bonds. We make sure that there's no expirations, and we could actually put liens on the property if they are not satisfied. Once the surety bonds, the developer's agreement are in place, then we would release the cash bond. And we would also say that no certificates of occupancy will be issued until the road is completed.
At the last meeting, it was brought up that 2020 is the end date to finish the road. Is that going to give them enough time? I mean, are they going to have it done by 2020? Because it's 2019 here.
I believe... Absolutely. I believe that they want to do this tomorrow. As soon as we get this paperwork in place, they can go out and pay the pavers to go out and do it. So, I think by fall, it should be done.
I don't have any problem with the pavement. I just have a problem with the development agreement. Why, that one should have been in, it was in the conditions of approval. You weren't here, but it was in the conditions of approval.
You know, all I could say is, I don't want to go backwards. I just want to fix whatever the situation is at this time. I want to get the road in place for the town, for the developer, and for the residents.
Right. But I'd be happy to know when the developer's agreement comes in.
Oh, I could absolutely let everybody know.
So, we could approve with the condition that you guys don't move forward until the developer's agreement is in?
And the surety bonds.
And the surety bonds.
Right. And then I would just request that you would grant us the ability to release the cash bond once those items are in place.
Point your chain of motion.
Ms. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the sequencing for the road improvements as described in our memo of May 15, 2019, revised June 6, 2019, for the subdivision known as Public PH 2479, River Overlook, and PH 2526, River Meadow, both accessed from Bridge Lane, and add a condition that the developer agreement shall be, I guess, completed and that the... filed, and that the cash can be released according to the sequencing that we prescribed.
So, I kind of heard that in different words, as once the developer's agreement and surety bonds are in place, the town attorney and staff may release the cash bond?
Correct.
And they don't have to come back to us.
Okay. Without coming back to PCC. Thank you.
Second.
Any discussion? There are none? All in favor? Take a vote? So, it's five, zero, zero. I did it right.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Old Business Site Plan Review, SPR 1774, 25 Hazard Avenue. Take the roll, please.
Charles Ladd.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Please state your name and address when you're ready.
Hi. My name is Jessica Bates. I'm a senior engineer with BL Companies. I'm here to present the AAA site plan modification at Hazard Ave, 25 Hazard Ave. I'm pretty sure we've all discussed this parcel of land previously. Since we last met you guys a month or so ago, we have met with the town engineer, Assistant Engineer, John Kabibbo. Did something happen? Can you guys see anything? Oh. You should see the screen. It's much better.
Okay. Now you're on.
All right. We're back. So, Jessica Bates, Senior Engineer, BL Companies, Hartford, Connecticut. We're working on the AAA project at 25 Hazard Ave. It's the intersection of Hazard Ave and Freshwater Boulevard. This piece of the property used to be used as a commuter parking lot. Since we last met with you guys, we have met with the Assistant Town Engineer, John Kabibbo, and staff, and we have addressed the comments that were made by the fire marshal. Just to give everyone a little bit of history on the project, since we had approval previously, we have modified the site plan a little bit to create less of a fill in the floodplain and therefore less compensatory storage than what was approved earlier this year. The re-rating of the site plan was kind of done as a blending of the development to the existing parking lot, and as part of that, removed the retaining wall that was around the north side of the development that was approved previously. In turn, this reduces the amount of fill in the floodplain, the amount of compensatory storage that is necessary. And since we last saw you at the commission a month ago, we have since added a very small 200-square-foot addition to the northeast corner of the building because they would like to add an additional restroom in the north part of the building, which is the automotive bay area. So, in between then and now, they have modified the architecture in the building a little bit just to add another restroom, so it increased the square footage of the building by 200 square feet. That change did not change the elevations. It did not change the fill. It didn't change anything. The area that got expanded used to be pavement, so it didn't even change the impervious cover of the site. We actually took a little bit of the impervious that is near, like directly adjacent to the expansion, and turned it from bituminous concrete asphalt into landscaping and grass. So, it has gotten slightly better in terms of the impervious cover even since the last time we saw you. Everything else remains the same on the site. To appease the fire marshal comments, we have added sprinkler to the entire building, so there is now a large Dr. Lyran diameter pipe feeding it to support the fire suppression system. Everything else really remains exactly the same. The building finished floor elevation is still one foot above the base flood elevation, so it's still 115, 75, above base flood of 114, 75. The building placement didn't move at all. All the other corners stayed the same, just one corner expanded slightly. And same traffic flow. We still have the one-way drive aisle by the main entrance. That didn't change, and it still complies with all zoning rules and regulations. So, everything else has been addressed. We have, you know, met with the Assistant Town Engineer. He is, you know, happy with our compensatory storage calculations and everything else, and the fire marshal is happy with the fire suppression system. So, that's the modification since the last time we saw you.
Anybody have comments, questions?
He's also happy with his fire lanes?
He didn't have any issues with how the plan is laid out, once we put the fire suppression system in and the sprinkler system. So... Oops. I was trying to zoom in on the building, and I didn't. He appeared to be. He didn't have any additional comments regarding the fire lanes. So, we've hatched out in front of the two baysides for no parking so that people can't stack there, and he'd have access to both sides of that building.
Rich? That's why I'm asking.
I don't have any comments.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve SPR 1774 for the minor site plan modifications as prepared by the draft resolution dated April 11, I believe, 2019, with the 33 conditions noted.
Second.
Any discussions?
I think we had everything said last time they were here.
You ready to vote? Okay. All in favor? Got those against?
Eight, zero, zero.
No. It's four...
Four, one.
Zero. It's four, one, zero. Yes, I got it right. I counted myself.
I'm sorry for clarification. We have four in favor, one against.
Yes.
Do we have any reasons for that?
You've got to give your reason.
Have reasons for denial.
Oh, yeah. I brought them up at the last couple that we discussed, the fact that it's... I understand that it's less impact, but it's still lower. And with the amount of rain that we've been getting lately, I really don't want to see any more impact than what was approved the first time. So, that's why I voted no.
Thank you.
All right.
Done?
Done.
You're going to make a motion to move this?
Yeah. Text amendments.
Ms. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we move the text amendments, A, B, and C, to right before number eight, new business.
Second.
All in favor? Okay. All right. Text Amendment XZA 19-03, and that is the proposed text amendment to Table 5.0, place of worship use.
Yeah, the town attorneys have requested that we just table that for now. They wanted to research it a little bit further.
I'd like to make a motion that we table XZA 19-03, text amendment to Table 5.20, to our next meeting.
Second.
All in favor? Five in favor. Okay. Text Amendment XZA 19-04, proposed text amendment to Section 5.20.2, outdoor dining patio audio system.
So, that is as we had... I lost my paperwork on this.
Yeah, I did too. It's in here somewhere.
Oh, here. So, basically, that was just to allow audio systems by way of special permit, which the outside patio would require anyway, so it would just be an add-on.
It's a public hearing.
There was something in there too about if they didn't comply.
Oh, you're right. Yeah. This is a public hearing. You're right.
Oh, sorry.
So, the Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 13, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. XZA 1904, proposed text amendment to Section 5.20.2, outdoor dining patio audio systems. Charles Ladd.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
All right.
So, do you want me to just read it for the record?
Please.
Okay. So, the motion is to approve a text amendment to Section 5.20.2, to allow outdoor audio systems on outdoor dining patios subject to established criteria under a special use permit. Town of Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission, applicant effective on the date of publishing of the notice of action. And the wording also includes that you would have the right to take that audio system away should it not... Hold on, I want to read it properly. Commission may approve outdoor audio systems with a special use permit upon review of surrounding uses and compliance with the Town of Enfield noise ordinance. The commission may also revoke said permit with noncompliance with conditions of approval.
Was this submitted to CROG? And was there any comments, feedback?
Yes. All three of these were submitted to CROG, and we did not receive any referral back on any of them.
Perfect. Thanks.
Anybody in the public like to comment on this text amendment? Anyone in the public like to comment on text amendment? Anyone in the public like to make comment on this text amendment? Hearing none? I closed the public hearing on that? Okay?
Yep. I think it's just what we asked for. So...
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve XZA 1904, text amendment to Section 5.20.2, as indicated in our draft resolution dated June 13, 2019.
Second.
All in favor? It's unanimous? Okay. Do you want to take the roll again?
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 13, 2019, at 7:00 PM in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following. XZA 1905, proposed text amendment to include new proposed planned senior life community regulations. Charles Ladd.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
And Richard Suzak is here.
Lori?
So, we did discuss these a little over a month ago. This basically creates a community of what they call planned senior life community. It would include things such as assisted living facilities and independent living, memory care units, all on one campus, such that family members could theoretically move from one location to the other on campus and still be able to visit each other. So, this is the new wave of elder care, or not as young as we used to be care.
I like that better. I like that term better.
So, I think that you had not... You pretty much had approved the wording as it was. That's what we sent to CROG. We did not receive anything back from them. Town Attorney did not have any concerns about any of the wording here. I think there was one minor correction for spelling that they had. So...
I see Val. Did you... Anybody in the public would like to come forward? Please. Name and address, please.
Are we good? Yeah. I'm Valerie Pharoah, Avon, Connecticut. I'm the president of Good Earth Advisors. I'm a certified planner as well as an environmental scientist. I worked with staff to develop this proposal that's before you. As you've heard before, and I certainly want to accentuate the fact that elder care is certainly emerging. We know we're all aging, as much as we want to try to stop it, we are. Enfield, like many other communities, is somewhat older in demographics than some of the surrounding communities. I started examining the proposed regulation because I was approached by a prospective operator who had done some initial marketing and saw Enfield as a very strong prospect for, as Lori aptly said, a campus-type aging in evolution. The more you need, it's there without having to dramatically change your location. Also, aging in place, not so much in your home, although that's, you know, often preferred, but maybe you can't handle that, but aging in a continuum of your community, where you shop and see friends, where you worship, all of that, because I think we have to continue to strive to keep our communities intact. So, I assisted staff with drafting some of that to reflect not only that mission and that goal, but also to afford the commission, you know, the apt control over that type of land use. It sounds like a great idea, but we felt like the regulation, when we went through your existing regulations, we really couldn't accommodate it, particularly in the format that we're starting to see emerge, and other towns have captured. So, I think it positions Enfield. It also gives you a good, strong reg that you can go through and aptly review during site plan and make a decision whether that's, you know, the appropriate use of that site. I think the control is there. I think the mission is there, and I certainly wholeheartedly endorse it, and I'm hoping that there'll be developers taking advantage of this quite soon. Thank you.
Anyone in the public like to come forward to speak for or against this text amendment? Come on in. Come on down. Name and address.
Karen LaPlante, 166 North Maple Street. I am not speaking on behalf of the Conservation Commission. I'm still a little annoyed that it's so hard to find these text amendments before the public hearing. I went online yesterday, and they were not available online, so it would mean I'd either have to call Planning Office or come in here and look at it. In the day and age where everything's easier to put online, I don't know why it couldn't have been put online, all three of these. Maybe I wasn't looking in the right place, but I didn't see them anywhere. And I don't get the paper, so if it was spelled out in the legal notices, I didn't see it there either. So to be able to comment on these things, we need to know what they are. When you were discussing it about a month ago, they were vague discussions. There wasn't anything specific. There were ideas, and it was put down on paper. I didn't hear you people review it in any of your subsequent meetings. It just went straight to CROG, and so now I'm still commenting blind. But I did hear the discussions that it was going to be added to industrial zones, and my concern with that is, is the appropriate places, they abut... You know, if it's abutting a residential zone, that's one thing, but if it's abutting a prospective industrial site that might have a big trucking warehouse, I don't think it would be appropriate. And basically, all of our farmland is in industrial zone, so we would be losing farmland also, our potential farmland. And it would be developed in areas where there may not be water and sewer available. So that would be a concern, that it would require these facilities to be extended when, I believe, certain areas are not supposed to be sewered in town without approval from the state. So I just want to caution you, when you get one of these developments, that the site is appropriate, and if there's an empty site next door, there's nothing you're going to do to stop an I-1 industrial site from putting in a trucking warehouse or something like that, next to these elderly people that are trying to enjoy their last few years of life. So it does concern me that I believe you're going to allow it in an industrial zone versus just the residential. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak for or against? Anyone else? Anyone else like to come forward to speak for or against? Val, would you like to address the concern? Oh, wait, sorry, sir? Sorry, Val. I need your name and address, sir?
My name is Douglas Oaks, 29 Quaker Lane, here in Enfield. I came here for, one, the reason that she just brought up, but that was on a text amendment 1903, about the religious worship uses. I had some concerns about it, because I couldn't find anything on it. We're finding a lot of religious uses going into the business fronts, and that's the reason why I came. If the town could...
We've tabled that.
When you put these in the announcements...
Excuse me, sir?
The kiosks.
We've tabled that one, so we can't discuss that one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
We can only discuss the one currently doing, 1905.
Apologize.
Okay. Not a problem. All right. Thank you.
Excuse me, Madam Chairman. Mr. Oaks, if you'd like to come to the Planning Office or to the next... Okay. All it is, is removing places of worship from that zone, that's it?
My question is why?
Okay, okay. We'll answer that at the Planning Office.
Okay, anybody else like to speak on 1905? Anyone else? One last time? No? You're on. She was going to address Karen.
Madam Chairman, yeah, so we don't advertise our public hearings as far as the text or anything. We advertise in the paper what is going to be heard.
Right.
And it says, if you're interested, come to the Planning Office. So, you know, unfortunately, Karen, I don't know... I know you know where we live, so I would hope next time you just pursue us a little bit more. But the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed exactly what we sent to CROG, and they reviewed it word by word at a public hearing. So, well, I'm sorry, not a public meeting, a public hearing, a public meeting. This is the public hearing of that, so... The other thing is, is that this will require it to be on public sewer and public water, so more than likely, it will not be able to go into most of the residential zones, because they aren't on sewer and water, so...
Mary?
I guess one of the questions I have is, is there any way, when we do something like this, can we put them up online, just for the convenience? Is there no reason why?
We could try. There's many steps that we have to do. I know Jenny knows.
I totally understand.
Yeah.
But if we can try to, that would be great, especially when we do three of them like this. You know, sometimes, having so many of them, might be able to clarify a few things, so...
Of course. We'll try to get that done.
I'd go for that, too. It is easier. I understand, that's a very valid question.
Yeah.
Just to follow up on some of the questions that are being posed, Lori's correct. If you look at the zone as proposed, you have to have water and sewer. As you know, it was written with extensive buffers, natural resource amenities, protection of natural resources. So the way it's basically constructed is to encourage a developer to look for a suitable site, would provide, you know, an apt environment for aging population. As you know, these are private facilities, they're not state-funded facilities, and therefore, marketing, aesthetics, arrival image is of the utmost importance. That's why you never find anything on their site. I mean, you just can't turn around, and there's a wrapper, and it's picked up. I mean, it's just, that's the way things have to be handled. So I think there's adequate controls there. Water and sewer, yes. Buffers, yes. But in terms of the process that the Commission has gone through, I believe there was extensive informal discussion first, providing educational materials by Lori to acquaint you with aging populations, markets, and how it's being handled. Then we came back with an extensive list of evaluations of other towns, of land use controls, how it's handled. There was an extensive discussion there, with some feedback to Lori to make amendments. We did so. That's what went to CROG, and here we are today.
Yes, John.
This is... This would be approved... Once it gets on our regulations, it would be by special use permit?
Absolutely.
Okay. Because I was the only one that spoke at the last meeting against industrial, and that was my only concern. I think the regulations, as you have worked very hard on them, are great, and they'll be an attribute to our towns and our citizens, but the industrial one was a real sticking point with me.
Right.
So as long as it's a special use permit, we get to say about it.
And that's not to say that, you know, just because it's industrial, it's going to fit. It's got to have a lot of things going for it.
Yeah.
And pass the muster of these very rigorous market studies in order to get financing. So I think there's enough there to ensure, you know, the right environment.
Thank you. Anyone else like to come forward and speak for or against? Anyone else? One more time, anyone else like to come forward? No? Hearing none? I'm going to close this. Okay, I'm sorry. XZA 1905.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve XZA 1905, text amendment to allow planned senior life communities, as prepared by staff and the draft resolution dated June 13.
Second.
Any comments? Any discussion? Hearing none? Shall we take a vote? All those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Okay. Public hearing 2942. Like to read the legal notice? Please?
The Enfield Planning and Zoning Commission will hold a public hearing on Thursday, June 13, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in the Town Hall Council Chambers, 820 Enfield Street, Enfield, Connecticut, concerning the following application. PH 2942, 143, 145, 147, 149, and 153 Elm Street, and Lot 72 Carroll Street. Special use permit for commercial shopping center development for permissible uses in a business local BL zone. The shops at Elm Street Square LLC, owner applicant, map 57, lots 112, 113, 114, 115, 116, and 72 BL, and R33 Zones. Charles Ladd.
Here.
Mary Scott.
Here.
Virginia Higley.
Here.
Linda DeGray.
Here.
Richard Suzak is here.
Good evening, Madam Chairman. We're just setting up, and while we're doing that, for the record, Attorney Paul Smith. I represent the shops at Elm Street Square LLC, which is the applicant and owner of the subject property. With me tonight is Frank Triano, who is the principal of the applicant and the owner. Dave Ziyaks is the professional engineer who designed and worked on this project. He's setting up the easel. And also, I think Scott Heskeyt from FA Heskeyt Associates, who was the traffic engineer on this development, is also present to answer any questions or to give you any guidance with regard to what was done with regard to the traffic. By way of overview, the property is located on the north side of Elm Street. If you might recall, it's approximately a 16-acre site. When I say 16 acres, that encompasses not only the colored area, but the proposed open space area, which runs up towards Montclair. The total site, as I said, is approximately 16 acres. Of that, five acres in the rear, we have proposed to use as what's known as passive open space. It's going to be, our proposal is to own it, maintain it by the owners of the development, but it's strictly passive open space. It will have no use, other than to, again, be open space for the neighborhood. That leaves us the front parcel, which is a little over nine acres in size, which you may recall, we rezoned, I believe it was 2016, probably about almost three years ago. We came to the Commission with a proposal to rezone that front piece, which was existing R33, to business local or BL. That was approved in July of that year by the Commission, and we are now back here under your BL regulations, proposing this commercial development. Basically, as you can see from the development itself, our initial proposal here is for, basically, for buildings. We've tried to manage this site in a way that it's... The real retail activity is towards the front of Elm Street and into the center. Right now, we have one tenant that has committed, which is People's Bank, to the bank building which we had proposed, which is the building to the right on this map, which would be to the east. North, this would be to the east. So they're not an existing bank in town, so they're anxious to come into the Enfield Market. They look forward to that. They were actually the successor to First National Bank of Suffield, which was interested in this site. They acquired First National Bank of Suffield, and were also extremely interested in operating a branch facility at this location. So this is the site that we are proposing at this point. A couple of things, and I'm going to have Dave Ziyaks sort of walk you through a bunch of it, but as you can see, we paid particular attention to try to craft berms and plantings around the circumference of the site in a way that minimizes its impact on any of the residential areas to the east or the west. Anything to the north, again, you have this large amount of open space. We are even proposing on both sides of our water quality basins, shrubbery on one side and then trees on the other, again, softening this whole area in terms of how it impacts the residences. We've did extensive work, and Dave, again, and Scott will get into this, in terms of a design for ingress and egress to this site, being sensitive, obviously, to the fact that Elm Street is a highly-traffic road. Because it's across from Paloma Drive, it's ingress and egress to the entire site is going to be controlled by light, by traffic light. There are going to be some dedicated lanes, as I remember, Dave, correct, for turning? So it will significantly improve sort of this intersection, if you will. And as you can see, it will be actually the main ingress and egress into the site. And so we think it works really well. We've been very careful in terms of, and you have as part of your plans, you have what we have shown as architecturals, you have our lighting plan, and we've tried to be, I think, reasonably sensitive in all those areas, again, to try to minimize any impact on the residences which are located near the site. And again, we've designed everything as a BL, which in this zone is a single-story facility, so you don't have any large multi-story buildings, which are, again, might impact abutting residences. They're all, I think the max height on our buildings, I think, shows a little under 24 feet, like 21 feet or something like that, on our architecturals. And again, Dave will sort of walk you through some of those designs, but it's... You will see it's a very sort of... We're trying to do a very soft look. Some of it's really nice. The bank, for instance, is going to be an Albrecht building, so I think it'll have a great look. I think it'll minimally impact, and as you can see, it'll minimally impact the residences on each side and going up. So this has obviously been something we've worked on a long time since the zone change approval, to try to get right. And I think we're very comfortable with the plan. We think, again, that it is sensitive to the neighborhood, and also works very well in terms of a busy highway like Elm Street is, in terms of the traffic signal. Dave, I'm going to give it to you, just to walk them through sort of some of the technical stuff.
Good evening. I'm Dave Ziyaks with FA Heskeyt Associates, and as Paul pointed out, our firm prepared the site plan package that's before you this evening. And as Paul pointed out, we have the front portion of the site facing Elm Street is 9.93 acres of land that was rezoned to BL. And so all of the data that's in the zoning table and the analysis for the site is based just on that 9.93 acres. It does not consider the open space or anything like that that's left alone, outside of all of our calculations. So when we say something meets the criteria, it's based on the 9.93 acres. We believe the proposed project meets all of the design criteria that's in your zoning ordinance. We're not asking for any waivers. The site will be served by town sanitary sewer, public water, gas, and electric. We are proposing 55,796 gross square feet of area in the four buildings. As Paul pointed out, the smaller building, which will be on the right-hand side here, is going to be a People's Bank branch that will have a drive-through. There are no other drive-throughs proposed on the project. We have 279 parking spaces proposed, which meet the zoning requirements. The lot coverage is 49%, and that's compared to your 66% that's allowed in the zone. The total building coverage would be 12.9%, and that's versus the 35% that's allowed in the zone. So we're considerably below both the total lot coverage and the building coverage with the project. the project. Would you get up and put that away? Frank's going to flip over the, that board up there has a blow-up of the site plan on it, so we can talk about the general layout. This is a colored rendering of a combination of sheets, LA1 and LS1, that are in your package. But basically, we would be looking at two driveways to Elm Street. One would be the main driveway, which would be across from Palumbo. That'll be a full-service driveway serviced by the traffic signal at that location, which we will have to modify. And then we are proposing a driveway further to the west over here onto Elm Street, which would be a restricted drive, right turn in, right turn only out. We think that's necessary just for general, good access on the site, and also for truck access to the site, and also for emergency services. Relying on one driveway, I think, would not be prudent. So at that location, that will not be signaledized, but it'll be restricted right in, right out. We will have another access drive located all the way around the site for access for trucks and for, again, for emergency vehicles. An extensive use of sidewalks throughout the site, which will tie down in two points at both driveways to a new sidewalk that we will construct along, that's our side of the Elm Street, be a new concrete sidewalk, which will tie into the existing walks to the west and to the east. Our internal landscaping within the parking area exceeds the minimum amount required in the zone of 15%. And as Paul pointed out in his statement, that the, the layout focuses all of the buildings towards Elm Street for the public. Public access to the buildings will basically be aimed towards Elm Street and away from the neighbors. Now, given the amount of coverage and both the lot coverage and building coverage, there is some room on the site for potential future development, and we fully understand that, particularly in the rear of the, the back building, this green area here will remain in a, a mowed condition and open until such time as we may be back with another special use application. But at this time, we have no use in mind for that area right now. But that requires a special permit to come back and do anything there. If we want to take a look, just a brief look at a previous master plan that we, we all talked about when we did the zone change, but also it was the subject of the wetlands application for the project. We went, we went forward with a, a larger project before the wetlands commission at the time. Frank, why don't you put that plan up over there? Just to give you a comparison, and I wanted you to understand that we, we listened to the comments that we received during the zoning meeting and the preparation of this final plan that we've brought before you. But that, that plan that we presented at the time had over 65,000 square feet. It had over 330 parking spaces. And from, I went back and I looked at my notes of the meeting, and some of the concerns and comments that were expressed by the commission at the time was, there was some concern about the placement of a 20,000-square-foot retail building way up at the north end of the site. You asked us at the time to consider increasing the distances of the buildings from the property lines west and east. There was concern about orienting the buildings away from the properties on the west and the east, particularly the rear of a building. For instance, I know there was some concern about this building over here on the right-hand side, that the rear of that building was aiming towards the residence to the east. And you definitely wanted to see our lighting have zero trespass over onto properties, and you wanted to see an extensive drainage system that would present no impacts to the neighbors. And of course, extensive buffer landscaping to be provided. And we really think that the, the new plan that we're presenting with, to you this evening addresses all of those comments and concerns that you expressed. We worked hard to listen to what you had to say. The site lighting is, we're going to have all-new LED lighting. Details were provided. We have a simple, high-tech appearing luminaire. We've used it on very similar ones on all of our new sites. It's very techie-looking, very nice. Twenty-foot-high poles on concrete bases, so really the poles will be lower than the buildings. They're dark sky compliant, and they're cutoff fixtures. So we provided the photometric plans for the design of the, of the system to staff, and you have copies of that. But basically, we'll have zero-foot candles at all property lines, including Elm Street. So you have full cutoff. It's contained on our site. We're very, very sensitive to the neighbors. And, and again, these, these light poles are down below the elevation of the buildings. So I think we have an excellent lighting plan. It's energy-efficient, and it will be, again, sensitive to our, to our neighbors. Our drainage plan, we submitted a comprehensive report to staff, which was reviewed by your town engineer. We are constructing a large detention basin, water-quality basin, up at the north end of the site. Why don't you take that, yeah, take that, switch that one back. And this, this was what was reviewed and approved by your wetlands commission last year. So the stormwater system I'm presenting this evening is the one that they, they reviewed and approved. But up here at the north end of our site, there'll be a large stormwater basin, water-quality basin constructed at that location. As a result of that, all of the drainage on our site will be directed to that basin. And that basin will serve as a detention pond and a water-quality basin to polish the water before the runoff leaves our site and heads north to the natural systems to the north. We'll have a reduction in peak flow over what's presently coming off the site. That was hard to do, since the site is not developed. So to, to have less peak runoff coming off the site, you need a large, we've devoted a, a big chunk of this property to a, a large detention basin to accomplish that, to make sure there's no impact to the resources to the north. But that's for all storm events, from the two-year storm all the way to the 100-year storm event. Really, this, your town usually focuses on a 25-year event, but I like to design them all the way to the 100-year event. So with the system, it easily meets the, the town's requirements, and it meets the DEP's water-quality standards for, you know, for this type of project. What we've done, too, also, is included in the, the grading plans along both the west side and the east side. We have a, a swale running down along the property line, which will direct runoff from our site, but it also captures runoff coming off the backyards of our neighbors. And that will be directed to that, to that water-quality basin as well. So none of our water gets on to their property, and none of their water gets on to our property. Seems like a good compromise. So that's the way that system was, was proposed within the project. You can see in your comments that you receive from the town engineer that he's reviewed the study and concurs with, with the design. Do you want to take a quick look at the architecture now?
Paul, you want? The bank first?
Yes. Let's start out with the bank. The bank design has been evolving, and I was pleasantly surprised to see that it's entirely a brick building. It's, it's going to be a very nice New England-style colonial-looking building, completely cladded with, with brick. Simple roof design. You know, it's a true, true New England-looking structure. There is, you can see here where we have our small drive-through. There's one bay for access to a teller, which I understand is going to be a high-tech virtual teller. I haven't seen one of those yet, but... And then one lane will be devoted to an ATM machine. So it's very modest. Drive-throughs through banks don't generate very much traffic, and they're only open pretty much when the bank is open, except for the ATM machine. So that seems to be well-situated and works out well. Paul, put up the... Then for the, the other buildings, the architecture of those will be all the same, going with a theme here. And these are set up to be potential multi-tenants. I mean, they could potentially be one tenant, but they're designed to accommodate multi-tenants. And you can see the height has been varied across the building by a couple of feet from building to building. There's lots of glaze, glazing and glass in the front of the units. There's individual sign panels for, for the tenants. And it's going to be a nice mix of materials. We've got brick that'll be very similar to what's on the bank. We have some other masonry materials mixed in, flat stones, flat panels. And then where the sign panels are, those would be hardy plank clapboard siding. So all, all in all, the, the bank, or the, these buildings will have a nice, modern retail look to them, to all the facades. We're not proposing any signage at this time. This is strictly for illustration purposes. You can see their fake names up there. That'll have to come back either before staff or before the commission, depending upon what they propose. We are looking at, the only lighting that would be on the building would be only on the front facades, and, and there would be small Scots walls systems right there. And the main thing for those is just to shine down on the sort of column areas, just to add just a little bit of lighting flavor to the building at night, rather than just relying on the wind, the lighting coming from the glass. These, these are strictly for aesthetic purposes. They don't, they will not throw off any glare. They're not wall packs. They're decorative lighting. And you can see also, over each doorway, there'll be fabric canopies installed, in some cases over the windows and other cases over the, over the doorways. So it gives you a nice contemporary look. Each building has a screened dumpster location proposed and a loading space designated for each building as well. For landscaping, could you flip back? There's a very extensive landscaping plan shown on your sheets, LS1 and LS2, with a lot of emphasis on, yeah, that's it right there. A lot of emphasis on the heavy buffering, on, within the 35-foot buffer that's required on both the west and east property lines. You can see in, in color here the amount of material that's being proposed along, and that doesn't take into consideration, there's actually, if you walk along the backs of the properties on, on both sides, there is a, you know, there's an assortment of different plant material that exists now on the, on the property lines, and also there's various different kinds of fencing there as well that are privately owned. We don't plan on touching any of the fencing, and whatever plantings are along the common boundary line, those will remain as well. Those aren't shown on this plan. This is all planting that we will install. We've also added additional planting along the north side of the detention basin, even though that's several hundred feet from the end of Montclair. We, we added in some additional buffer there, which will have an opportunity to grow and block any possible view that they would have of the back of our development. We are planning on saving a few trees along Elm Street. Those are mixed into the landscaping plan. You can see where there's like a gap here and here, where there's no proposed plantings. There are, there are a few nice, mature trees in that area that we can save. They're be, far enough behind our new sidewalk, and they're within that area between our proposed parking lot and the sidewalk, and we'd like to save those. We have foundation plantings proposed around each of the buildings, and we have considerable landscaping within the parking lot islands. And just to give you an idea of the numbers we're talking about, this is a lot of landscaping. We've got, some of this is required by your zoning ordinance, which is very clear as to what the buffer requirements are, but then there's additional landscaping that we're proposing above and beyond that. But you're looking at 104 canopy trees planted on the site, which would be a mixture of maple, birch, honey locusts, pin oaks, elm trees. That's all listed on sheet LS2, I believe. You're also looking at an additional 91 ornamental trees, which would be flowering trees such as crab apple and red beds. Then we have 183 evergreen trees, which would be a mixture of fir, spruce, pine, and arborvitae. Those are primarily on both sides of the property lines, mixed in with the berms. And then there's also many shrubs and lots of ground cover proposed within the project. What we've been focusing on is, we're adding berming along the side, the seaside here where the bank would be. And then back here, on both the east side and the west side, we have relatively large berms proposed at those locations, four to six, four to six feet high, with additional, with the plantings obviously on top of those. And, and the theory there is that you start to pick up neighboring houses on both sides here, and they really won't be able to see the front parking lot at all, because the building in the rear will block that. But, and the lighting, of course, is below the elevation of the buildings. But any view that they may have of the back building, that's why we emphasize the berming in that location and the heavy landscaping there, to block the view of the back of this building from these neighbors on both sides. Then we have the traffic improvements on Elm Street. We have filed an application with OSTA. This project is large enough to require an OSTA certificate to be issued by the state traffic, or state administration, traffic administration now, which is really an arm of DOT. And we've been in contact with them for a couple of years, as I recall. We talked about that during our zoning meeting, that we have been working out an appropriate layout. We all know what the goal here is. The goal is to get exclusive left-turn lanes, one into our site and one into Palumba, particularly the one at Palumba, because it's missing. The state has tabdanced around that intersection for 35 years that I know of. We've, as you know, we've worked on every shopping center in town, and we've done, but for some reason, that intersection keeps getting jumped over by people. We've done a lot of work at a lot of intersections, but that one's been missed. And we all know if you're traveling westbound on Elm Street, if you live, if you know it, you get out of the way in time. If you don't, you get stuck behind that one car that's trying to make a left-hand turn, and it can get interesting. So this will solve that problem. And we're looking at putting the, that, that improvement requires a little bit of widening. We've been very sensitive to come up with a widening plan, working with DOT, so that we don't have to move all of the utility poles once again on the south side of Elm Street. And, and we do not have to dig into the front yards of, of the three homes, I think it is, from, on the east side. We don't have to dig into their front yards to, to accomplish this. So it's, it's been a challenge, but I think we've, we're successful. It's before the state for review. Your staff, obviously, has been reviewing it as well. If you have any comments at all regarding traffic impact or anything, Scott Hesket is here. He's really the traffic expert. I'm just an imposter here right now, trying to fill in the gaps. But, but basically, we're going to have to modify the traffic lights. It's going to be for all practical purposes, a new traffic light. It's a shame, they just put up a traffic light a couple of years ago, but they didn't take into consideration the fact that there was a commercial, there is a commercial driveway there now. Remember, there was a nursery operation here for many years, and there is a full driveway there. You can drive in, there was a house, and, you know. Unfortunately, they chose to ignore the fact that that driveway existed, mainly because I guess the nursery operation was out of business by then, but... So it's a T-intersection. It is not a four-way intersection. We have to modify that to make it into a four-way intersection. So unfortunately, we have to take down some, some of the light that was paid for by taxpayers' dollars and replace it with private dollars. If we look at the staff comments, you have your planning review, and then there's the other departments. Most of the comments are very minor comments, as outlined, the way I read them. They can, staff is, is basically incorporated those into recommended conditions of approval the way I see it. But Health Department had no comments. They'll be involved in the whole building process, obviously, as time goes on with the building permits. Fire Department really had no comments. They'll, they'll be involved with establishing fire lanes and appropriate signage. They'll be involved with establishing fire lanes and appropriate signage. We have to work with them very closely on that. And then they requested an additional hydrant than what we have shown, which we will accommodate. Engineering had no major comments. The police really didn't have any major comments. Scott Hesketh has been working with your traffic safety officer over the past couple of weeks. They've been going back and forth with various technical questions, but your police department will be involved in the OSTA review, so that will continue. And then WPCA sewer people had no concerns. So in summary, I don't believe that there will be any, any type of significant revisions of any kind with the plans needed to address the few staff comments that we have, and we accept their recommended conditions. At this point, I think I'll turn it over if you have any questions.
Mary? You want to go?
One of my questions is the way the bank is situated, the drive-through. It's right up near a home that's right over that little buffer that you put there. My concern is, I know ATMs are loud, and I know when you have a teller out there, that can be very loud, and that's a lot of noise that can go carry right over into there. Is there any way, I guess, why was that drive-through put on that side? Because I would think it would be better placed on the other side, only because of that residence, that house that's right over there, because the building would block a lot of that noise. So just a question about what that, why it was put on that side, and the other thing is being able to reduce that noise, if it's going to have to stay on the other side, which I'm not sure I like very much, abutting a residence, a house right there is a little bit of a concern to me, so.
Yeah. One of the, one of the thinking is that we're really trying to present a well-planned, you know, multi-building development here. And it just didn't, it just doesn't, in my way of thinking at least, it just doesn't feel right to have, and when we pull into this beautifully landscaped development and everything, that the first thing you see is a drive-through. The bank is a beautiful building. It's a nice, little modest, you know, New England-type of building. And by reversing it, you basically take away all the architectural component to the building the way I see it, and replace it with the drive-through. Drive-through is very modest. I mean, this is, it's not a major drive-through, similar to the one right across the street over here. But, so that was, that was the way, looking at it from a planning perspective. Then taking into consideration, you know, we, the building is skewed from the neighbor, and I was just looking at, the closest point of the canopy to the property line is 61 feet, and then it's 79 feet to the first corner of the actual building itself. So you've got a pretty good distance between even the point of, the closest point of the canopy skewed to the property. So we think with landscaping and the fact that, I mean, if this was, if this was a fast food restaurant or something, or one of our Dunkin' Donuts, or, you know, Starbucks or something like that, I wouldn't even be having this discussion with you, because we would have put it someplace else. But it's a bank, and the bank, the teller is only open when the bank's open. It's not open on Sundays. It's not open at night. It's not open first thing in the morning, you know. And the ATM...
ATM is 24 hours. And I don't know if you've heard of the ATM over here, but you can hear that.
Why isn't ATM noisy? I'm confused.
Beep, 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 when I press the buttons. Have you ever heard that? They are loud. They can get very, very loud.
Well, I think we can deal with that.
If we can make sure that that is something that is not an issue. And I guess for me, I'm more concerned about, it's not just the aesthetics of it, but also allowing the neighbors to use their property the way that they, you know, for their enjoyment. And I know that you say, well, it's only during these hours or those hours. What concerns me more than anything is making sure that they're protected and still can use their property. And even though you have a one side or the other, and it may not look the greatest in the world, you know, for me, it's more the concern of what's best too for that area and that neighborhood. And so that's why I'm more concerned with that in the end, you know, for our neighbors. And that one, I can see, when you put the first one up, you could just see where on the map, you can see that house right there. And I'm like, wow, right away, I could see that. And that concerns me. It just really does, because I really don't want these neighbors affected any more than they already have been, so.
I appreciate that, I do.
Jenny?
I was looking at John Cabibbo's memo dated June 7th, when I was reviewing this, and I didn't hear you mention his two concerns. He had a concern about the easement for the sidewalks, because the public is going to be using them. And he had a concern that on the landscape plan, there were two trees that were directly over the proposed drainage pipes. And he didn't think that was a good idea, so, you know, you might want to check his memo.
Yeah, no, an answer to your first comment was, we're proposing a 10-foot easement along the entire front, and it'll be for highway purposes. It'll be in favor of the state, which sidewalks are public entity. But state, the state likes to regulate sidewalks a lot, but they don't want to own them. So it's kind of a funny thing, you know. But yes, we have that comment addressed, and then obviously, we'll rearrange the trees a bit.
Thank you.
Okay. I have, I was out to the site. Of course, I was out to the site. One of the concerns that I had was that driveway, the dip, are you going to address that so that if traffic is coming in and out of that, that they're not just...
No, it'll be a nice, smooth transition. There'll be some grading going on and...
Because that was pretty steep. And I'm glad to hear that you're going to leave a lot of that plantings that are already there, that vegetation, because I did drive down St. James and Carroll, and I'm thinking, well, yeah, there's some of their back vegetation, and with leaving the boundaries. Because the thing that comes to mind is, to me, is what happened over in the Mayfield, their buffer, they, I just don't want that happening to these people, so that they're staring at huge buildings, you know.
No, we're being sensitive to that, and...
I was glad to see that and hear you say you're leaving a lot of that naturally.
Yeah, because I mean, technically, you know, I've done this before in town. Your ordinance does allow flexibility. You know, if we come in here and try to convince you that we get credit for existing vegetation, and we don't need to add in as much vegetation. Now, we've had that discussion on other sites, and we've agreed not to do that, because different circumstances. But regardless, you know, it's in your ordinance. Here, we're planting what we need to plant, and what's there is there. So if you want to think of it as a multiple layer, yeah, that's a way, that's one way to look at it. But that's, we're not coming in here asking for any credit for anything that's out there, other than the three, I think it is, really nice trees along Elm Street. Obviously, we're not going to plant a new tree next to that, but, but other than that.
No, I'm glad to see what you've done for the vegetation and that buffer. Thank you for that part, so.
Rich?
Again, I'd like to sort of reiterate what Mary had said in terms of, I looked at the elevation that you presented for the bank, and I guess the canopy over the drive-through was at the same elevation as the eve elevation for the main building. And normally, what happens is, I think that what you would like to do is, you probably should, you know, decrease the importance of a canopy versus the main building, so that, you know, what I would like to do is see something divorced from being at that high elevation. I think the play height they show right now is around 16 feet. And on the previous plan that they submitted, they had a canopy that was only about 11 feet high. So in that sense, I think that, you know, what happens is that when you start directing noise in terms of Mary's concern, and I agree with her, is that the fact that there's a lot of noise, and this is actually probably the closest that you come to any existing structure for the adjacent residences. So that, you know, probably what I would sort of try to recommend is that you would increase the amount of plantings that you had there, especially create a more diverse buffer that would protect that area for, you know, year-round. So I think that if you sort of decrease the size of that canopy, which won't allow the sound to travel up high, and then direct it towards, you know, a buffer of trees or a berm even, you know, looking at the grading plan, there's really no reason why you couldn't even add a little berm.
I was thinking about that, actually, when I started thinking about the comments and things, I was thinking that we could definitely enhance that berm on that side.
Right, because right now, it's just graded, you know, more or less flat. But the thing is, if you added a little berm and then added some, you know, trees, you can probably buffer that, that house. And that is the closest that you're coming, you know, to the main structures. Because looking at the west side, you've more or less, you know, mimicked the distance from, you know, your buildings anyways, to, you know, the structure of the residences on those sides, which is what we were sort of recommending you do, so that, you know, I think that you did listen to us for that other side. But, and, you know, I guess once you get past, you know, the bank building, you're into the back of some deeper lots, and you're into the back of that, you know, residence on the east side. So, so once you get past that area, I think that, you know, everything probably should be working properly, but definitely, you know, I would sort of agree with Mary to enhance that area, so that you can diminish the amount of noise that would be transmitted.
I think we can definitely do that. And again, I almost apologize for not having a big enough berm over there after I look at the plans. I mean, it's, we can definitely do a better job.
Just to add a couple more items, Frank Troyano, developer. There was a question before, and some of the neighbors, and speaking to a lot of the neighbors over the time, I think everybody thought we were coming right back in once we had our zone change. We were trying to do a thoughtful plan, that we had a change on the bank and a few other ideas. So we wanted to make sure it was very clear, and some of the promises that we made before, that we're donating the back land, or we're actually putting in a conservation easement. I just want to say it myself, because I made a lot of promises to a lot of people. I want to make sure it's very clear that we are continuing to do that, want to make sure that's held proper. Also, Carroll Street, there's a small trail there on Carroll Street. We've been working with DPW as giving them an easement to have that be a, is that the sewer line?
Sure.
That's going to go over there. We're going to have an easement. It's not a roadway. It will not be a roadway in the future, just to make sure that's understood, that we don't have the ability to do that down the road. And it's not going to be a building lot either, and there's going to be an easement in favor of the town for them to actually have that line to go forward, to make sure that it actually is proper. But that's also a DPW recommendation, when they had the ART meeting a couple of months ago. The bank design fluctuated just a couple of weeks ago, so it's not in your package. So we apologize about that, but that's something that's been a little bit flexible. But we're very excited to have People's Bank. They're very interested in coming. They want to be here. They want to be part of the community. And we asked, normally, you don't put a tenant's name on there, but they wanted to be part of the application, and they're looking forward to coming down as well. But I wanted to clarify, especially with the drainage, you know, David went over the drainage. That was something that was also a concern. So maintaining that and also making sure that the drainage has actually helped, not hurt. Nothing on our site goes off anywhere else, and anybody who actually has water coming in our area, there's a swale, so we can actually taper that in. We really try to be thoughtful and considerate to everything that people said in a long time. We've been up here a few times and making sure we understand this is a very impactful project, but we think we actually came up with something that's very workable as well.
Thank you.
Mary, you had one more question?
Yes. I couldn't, the location of the dumpsters. Where are the dumpsters located on the property, or where they're going to be located?
Yeah.
And snow stockpile areas. What about some of those you were trying to locate?
Yeah. Always have trouble with this microphone. For, what we're doing is, if you look on sheet LE1, you'll see for, at this time, we don't show a dumpster for the bank, because my experience is that banks don't like dumpsters. They deal with all of their internal trash and don't put, don't put anything else in dumpsters. If the documents need to be thrown away, they're shredded and taken away. And their cleaning service cleans the building every day and removes their trash. So for instance, buildings two and three, in the back corners, we have enclosed 10-by-12 concrete dumpster pads shown back there. So they have individual dumpsters. And then on building four, there's one on each wing of the building that would be enclosed dumpsters for that building as well. So by using, you know, some multiple locations, it keeps down on large, you know, compactor dumpsters and large dumpster areas. And we're screening with fencing, and we've put, you know, lots of landscaping around them.
That's why I was looking for the one for, the first building, so now that, because of being residents, everything, you know.
Right, yeah.
But that was really important to me.
I've done a lot of banks lately. I haven't put a dumpster at a bank in a long time, so.
The United Bank, the lane across the street, does not have a dumpster pad for that same purpose, even way back when, when we did that a long time ago.
Perfect, thanks.
Banks usually have their cleaning service taken care of.
Good, thank you.
In terms of your dumpsters, in terms of the hours of operation for the pickup and, you know, of dumpster, again, I think that we always have a concern that they don't do an early morning pickup in a residential zone, so that goes without saying, but...
I would suggest you guys add that to your special permit conditions, you know.
Snow, stockpile areas?
Oh, snow stockpile. Well, there's large areas now here behind this building for snow stockpile. The wetlands commission didn't have a problem where we placed it on site. They just didn't want us dumping it directly into the detention basins. So, yeah. We won't, we won't have a snow pile issue until and if we ever come back with more, you know. But right now, we got a big area for snow.
Anything else? Yep. Okay, so I guess I'm going to ask you to, I'm going to open it up to the public.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone in the public would like to speak in favor or against this? Do you have a list?
There's a sign-in sheet.
All right, a sign-in sheet. Everyone's on here. All right. If I can read the writing, Douglas Oaks. That was, okay. Al, and I can't, what would you say that is?
It's me.
Okay, sorry.
Peron.
I'm not sure, so.
Looks like it might be...
It could be an I, could be an E, so. Name and address, please.
Name's Al Peron. I live at 8 St. Thomas Street, right here in Enfield.
Have a seat.
Congratulate you, Mr. Troyano. Good plan. But I still have a concern with it. And I can see that there's been a lot of effort. I'm the guy that's more concerned about the water. If you look at, yes, the basin's very large. It's actually two and a half times any of our property, almost five times whatever the pond is that's back there. So it's very large, and it will collect all the water that's coming from the property that they're building is feeding that one basin. That's the only place it's going to drain, and there's only one exit to the pond. I own the property. If you look, and we could use a map, if you go to EC1. And if you look to the right of the property line there, where it says water quality basin, that uppermost right corner, that's my property. So I'm very familiar with it. And about the, each heavily rained time of the year, May, water will collect in my backyard in about the first 20 feet. Okay, I've lived there 39 years. I know why the person that had the property beforehand put his garden there. He didn't have to put water there. Okay? So, and I'm concerned about, about the water. Now, I understand, I spent some time now with John, and thank John for talking to me today. I understand a little better over, over the plan. So this, there's two times that this basin presents issues to me. One is, when there's heavily rain, it can't possibly discharge all the water, and they know that. It's there to collect and reduce the runoff. So that water will be, at its highest moment, quite a bit of water. Now, while that water may not move over to my land, or the other people's lands, it's drainage, it's seeping. The water table will come up. That's one of my concerns. I don't know what you do for it, but again, I'm concerned about that impacting and perhaps being a much more frequent, because again, I only get it during the heavy rains, and we haven't had that, this year we did. So I had it back there several years later, earlier, it wasn't. But I've had it several times throughout the year, throughout the time. And right now, we have something that does nothing more than funnel it all to that one place. So I've got to believe that the water table's going to rise... So, I've got to believe that the water table is going to rise more frequently than it does right now. I don't know what you do for that. All I know is I don't want it in my cellar. Okay? That's one. Take all the water away now. And I know, I can just hear what the next one is. The water can never be gone totally. In fact, if you look at the, just about the center of the paper, you'll see there's a little mound. The lowest level is 123 feet. Then it goes to 124 feet and then it goes back to 123 feet where the drain is. So, one of those will have stagnant water. And the key word is stagnant water, which follows mosquitoes. My concern is that we will create a place for mosquitoes that we presently don't have, especially during times of the year when people tell us we don't want water in our So, I leave you with those two thoughts and ask you to see what you could do to help us with those. That's my primary concern. Don't flood my basement. Don't let me have my garden. And don't let the bugs eat me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Bob Cummings. Name and address, sir, please?
Thomas Street. Good evening. About the site itself, from the comments tonight, apparently there's just one committed tenant. When more tenants come in, do they have to come, do they have to come before you for the special permit to occupy those buildings? That's a question. With regard to the approximately six acres of open space presently zoned R33, that open space resulted from the site zone change in 2016. It's unclear to me what the open space designation commits the owners to do. In other words, I understand he can't build any buildings on there, but can he use it for any other reason, like disposal of construction debris or when removing trees from the other part of the site? Or a crazy thing, could he decide to use it as a mulch generator? And with regard to the open space, I'd like to know if it has been offered to the town of Enfield. At one time, there was some talk about offering that to the town of Enfield. The question is, has it been offered to the town of Enfield? And lastly, does this open space commitment transfer to the next owner or owners? Or is it just resident with the existing owners? Regarding the traffic, there's been a lot said about the traffic. As a user of that part of Enfield, there are just long traffic lines that exist many hours of the day. And regardless of what the traffic study shows, they're now an inconvenience to the people of the town. And this part of Elm Street, east of I-91, has been a concern for a long time. In your Town of Enfield Plan of Conservation dated April 2011, there's a minor traffic concern about that part of Elm Street even then. And of course, things have intensified since then. And probably, the long-term traffic now is, lines are probably going to be increased by the Palumbo in-and-out site traffic signal modification. In other words, to allow that traffic to flow directly from Palumbo in and out of the site. And with regard to the second driveway, I heard some comments tonight about the second driveway, but they weren't clear and compelling as to why they need that second driveway, with the exception of it was mentioned that it might be used as an emergency driveway. That hasn't been designated at all in any of the plans and it's questionable whether the size of the driveway in and out could accommodate fire trucks, for example. So, I think the commission ought to question more thoroughly, why do we need that second driveway and what is its real purpose? And right now, there's been a lot of talk tonight about softening up the impact of this site development on the neighbors, which is to the benefit of the developer. And right now, the eastern side, site boundary is just a mixture of trees, brush, weeds, old broken wire fence, et cetera. In other words, it's not easy to identify. And the site outline is not clearly defined at this point. And I'm concerned about, while well-intended, people going in to cut out trees will take down some trees that should remain standing to help soften this effort. And so, my request is that the site outline should be clearly marked before any clearing starts. And in terms of softening the effect, particularly with regard to either line of sight or noise, I think the developer would make a big hit with the neighbors if they would increase the intensity of their plantings. In other words, rather than some bushes and shrubs which only grow to be about six feet high, if they would start out by planting six-foot arboretums, three feet on center down that whole eastern boundary, I think it would be standing in good stead with those neighbors. And lastly, there's a dumpster located at the, well, dumpster is located at the east and west end of building number four, which placed them pretty close to the neighbors. And now that the site building plans have changed and there's plenty of room to the north of that building, that dumpster could perhaps be moved to the back of the building and farther away from the neighbors and all the noise that accompanies with dumpsters and dumpster trucks. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Name and address, please?
Lori Woodson, 7 Montclair Drive.
Oh, closer to the mic. You're on TV.
Oh, yay. Lori Woodson, 7 Montclair Drive. I wanted to say, to start, that I commend the efforts on the changes. I think it's definitely moving in the right direction. I'd be kind of building off of what has already been previously said about some of the buffering type landscape. I live on Montclair, so I have that six-acre buffer in the back, along with some of my neighbors on St. Thomas and Carroll, which is useful. But my question is how, one, how is that going to be left to grow in? Nature is very good at filling itself in and maintaining itself over time. So, if that is truly just a green open space, will it be left to its own devices? There's plenty of that in town. Well, we'll say there's plenty of wooded areas in town that self-maintain and if that becomes a space like that, I think that would be good. Along the eastern and western portions of the developed space, I would also encourage evergreen type plants. Again, with the height and thickness, it would offer a buffer for light and sound in the winter as well, to make sure that we're not losing. Because I know that back section in the winter, we can see right through to Elm Street because most of it is deciduous. So, once all the leaves clear, it's like a straight shot to Elm Street. So, evergreen things would be helpful. One of my bigger concerns is the edging of that back six acres that abuts Montclair directly. I know there is some maintenance on the edging for my neighbors that actually abut directly to the property. And there are fences there and there's some landscaping issues going on there. In terms of that, I don't know, maybe it's 15 feet into that space, in terms of how that will be maintained moving forward or if it's going to be allowed to grow in. Two concerns for that was, I think, the snowplows when it's full in up there. I don't know if they have issues moving the snow into that space. Secondly, and this is a concern that hasn't been brought up, both for my area back there and my neighbors up here, more concerning for them directly abutting the property. I have witnessed, probably three times now, people not of my neighborhood coming up Mont Claire and walking through the field. So, I don't know, people, I'm not really, they're not from my neighborhood. I haven't really seen them before. Suddenly, it seems to be a walking path. I don't know if they're cutting to Elm Street. I don't know if there's squatters in the house at the moment, to be honest, which I believe is empty. But it's something that I have not seen. I've lived there for almost 15 years and I've never seen people just walk down the street and walk through the field before. If you think greenery and berms would keep people from cutting through or cutting across, I think that would be a little naive. I don't know if it's because people know that the property is sort of, not abandoned, but open at the moment, not being lived in or used, that they're finding it's a free space to walk or not. So, I don't know if there's anything that can be addressed. There used to be a fence at the end of Montclair and that, I think it more or less broke down. It was removed, if that's something to go into. I would consider particularly for these people that directly abut the property. And then last was the intersection, just two quickies. Would that also include the crosswalks and signals to cross Palumba, which don't exist now at that intersection? And the second drive with the right-in, right-out, one-way passageway? I think we all know that the five guys across the street, how many accidents happen there because people don't want to only turn right out of the space and they try to turn left onto Elm and craziness. So, I don't know if that's a, how that second exit will work, but to keep that in mind. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Rich? I'm not sure. Is that a G? Is that a G? Okay. We're not sure.
Sounds like Guarini.
Name and address, sir, please?
Rich Guarini, 8 Carroll Street. I came here with a list as long as my arm and I'm happy to say that many of the points that I needed cleared up have been cleared up since the last meeting. Some of those due to the changes that Frank has made, which has been a big help. I've been there, I've been at that address as the first house built there on that street. So, it's 60 or 61. And perhaps Virginia may be able to reach somewhere near there. There have been different things that have come up that have changed the property. The first thing, the biznets took the property at one point and they started to remove topsoil and it was sold to Pilch. And I called Town Hall and they immediately stopped that because they didn't have a permit to remove the topsoil. But what it has done, or did at that point, it creates an area where the water now settles from, and again, I'm on the west side, behind my fence and the property. So, the water settles there. That area that the water seems to settle, sounds like the area that's going to be, that I hear, 35 feet wide and take you down to the one pond that's going to take all this water. Is this the same area where these emergency quote-unquote trucks are going to circle the area? Are they going to drive over this area that's supposed to move the water? Is it one and the same, the area one and the same?
No, the 35 feet is actually a landscaped buffer area. And then the driveway is, you know, to the east of that landscaped area.
To the east of that landscaped area?
Correct. So, the driveway is actually further away and the trucks will actually be going down a paved driveway. It will be a controlled paved driveway.
Okay, very good. As long as it's to the east, I'm happy.
Correct.
Okay. That one area that Frank mentioned, I guess he's turned over to the state or the town. No houses can be built on. That's always been a big concern. And the concern for that was that when I bought my property, I was told that was the right-of-way to the biggest piece and would always be a right-of-way. I don't really care at this point, as long as we're not going to build something there or have cars going behind my house, I'm not really concerned, other than it's a little confusing. Okay? Big question, the question that I do have that I will leave with is with the lighting. My folks used to live at, were the Volkswagen places now. One of the problems that was there before my mom sold the property was that the lighting could be such that it's basically coming in my back windows or all of those houses on the west side of the development. Would not appreciate having lights in my back window during the middle of the night. Other than that, I can understand where it's time that property be used for something. If I owned the property, I would want to recoup some value from it. I'm not really pleased about it, but been there since 60, so I just have to live with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia? Name and address, please?
I'm Patricia Jones, 159 Elm Street. I am very happy to see what's developed since the last meeting. My biggest concerns, excuse me, are the two Vs, vagrants and vermin. The dumpster situation, I think y'all are ironing that out pretty well. I didn't like seeing that the dumpsters were towards the properties, but I think that you'll be able to move that to the back area better. My concern is, and maybe I just missed something, with the type of zoning, if there's going to be food service establishments allowed here. And if so, that concerns me because of the vermin and the smells. And there is a problem with vagrants in town, I'm sure you all know, and they are starting to congregate in that area. Maybe it's because the big white house is empty. So, my concern is that spilling over to our neighborhoods. And if maybe better fencing or maybe police patrol, once this is developed, something to protect us from them panhandling and hanging out in the grassy areas by the pond, et cetera. I know if I was a vagrant person, that would look pretty darn good for a hangout spot. Otherwise, I think everything looks fairly good. Again, I'm not. Again, I'm not liking the idea of a food service establishment of any kind right, literally in my backyard. I mean, five guys is bad enough, the smells and all from there, pretty bad when you're trying not to eat that stuff. Other than that, great. The ATM situation, I know they're coming up with a more silent type of keypads, and that would probably take care of that problem. So I think if we just be patient, that'll be fine. And then my mother wanted me to bring up the traffic, that they're having fatal accidents right in front of our house. And I think Mr. Troyano had assured me at one time that there is going to be a better situation once this is developed with that, so I'm going to hold him to that and hope for the best. So thank you for your time, and how do I find out if there's going to be food service establishments? Will there be a special use permit hearing? Or? That's you?
The food service is permitted by site plan. It's not a public hearing.
It is permitted.
Yes.
Great. So that I don't like. That I would really hope that you would be sympathetic to the people that live there, and try to find other tenants. Thank you.
Can I ask you one quick question?
Me?
Yes. Just because it's been brought up twice about people hanging out.
Yeah.
Has anyone, have you or your mother called the police about these people in the area? I'm just saying, because if it's not brought to their attention, they aren't going to know about it. It can't be everywhere, that's why.
Yeah, no, I personally have not, no, but there have been other people in the neighborhood that have.
So that they are aware of it? That's, you know?
They've got to be with everything that's been said. I know on the Enfield Public Forum website where people like to blow off their steam, I know there's a lot of that going on, back and forth about that, but...
I just want to make sure, you know?
Yeah, I'm glad that you're, I'm glad that that made an impact on you, so you remember that concern. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else like to speak? Name and address, sir?
Dan Blassco, 6 St. Thomas adjacent property. I just wanted to start off with saying this is a much better plan than when we started six years ago, I guess, maybe longer since I've been there. But it is a lot better, so I do appreciate everybody's efforts. My list is also shorter, thanks to a lot of the concerns you guys already brought up, the bank positioning and things like that, some drainage stuff was all covered. I think he was being generous earlier about the 20 feet, I've seen it come halfway up the backyard before, so just please take that into consideration. The only general other topics I wanted to cover was, we had talked in previous meetings regarding the rezoning about the traffic in and out of St. Thomas, and I didn't hear anything in this particular meeting regarding turning left and turning into St. Thomas and left out of St. Thomas. We talked about traffic going west, we didn't really talk about anything going east, and there has been, actually the backup while bad, turning left going westbound on the Palumba, that backup actually creates openings for people to stop so you can get in and out of St. Thomas. So while adding additional lanes might make it easier in and out of the new facility, it could create more problems for St. Thomas. So I just would like to have that included in the traffic study if it's not already, because there has been several significant accidents because of that. And I know we can kind of pitch down and go around Dorothy and all the way around, but in the winter with the big hill, it gets really icy, and that's a little worrisome as well. So I wrote it down so I wouldn't forget, because it was very good. Oh, I did have the people walking on the property as well, not so much anybody squatting or anything like that, but just in general, this nice facility goes in, people cutting through our properties to get to it, if there's shops that people want to be a part of. So there is fencing sporadically throughout the properties, and there is holes. I know there's a pretty decent buffer of cohesion brush, but teenagers will walk right through that, so I don't really want people in my backyard either with my young daughter playing. So please take that in consideration, I don't know if there's anything we do about fencing and, you know, piling that in there. Nice, my phone stopped locking every two seconds. Then with regards to, it was mentioned that there's one vendor, the bank, and that bank's been around, maybe it's a different version of the bank, but since our first discussions earlier, just a general concern of, it sounded like originally we were talking about 61,000 total square feet of building, and now it's up to like 71,000 or 74,000 square feet across all the buildings. Is that the right quantity? It is a good plan, and it is laid out, I just wanted to express that while it's a lot closer to the road and it is better, it is a lot of square footage, and I do worry about vacant buildings for extended periods of time. But that's my items, so thank you for listening, your time.
Anyone else like to? Name and address, please?
Wendy Steer, 24 Carroll Street. I would like to readdress the concern Mary raised, the site of the ATM and the drive-in banking. Quite honestly, that generates a lot of traffic. I personally go to Webster Bank, I find it's easier to park in the lot and go in the bank than it is to wait in line, because the line can be so long. That's just not a good situation. I've lived at that property since 1969, and I remember very well the nursery that was located there, and it was a very low-volume business. It was not nearly the volume of business that you'd have in outside banking. Also, I share the concern of the previous speaker regarding food service. Food can generate a lot of smells, outdoor dining can attract people who tend to just sit at the tables for extended time, even people who aren't customers. So, you know, it is an issue of loitering and smells. Thank you for your time.
Karen LaPlante, Enfield Conservation Commission, and I am representing the Conservation Commission tonight.
Address, please?
Now, 166 North Maple Street. I'd like to read these into the record. The Enfield Conservation Commission reviewed the plans for the above project and would like to submit the following comments. ECC would like to confirm the current plans showing the open space agrees with the originally approved plan. ECC requests a maintenance plan for the open space be included as part of this application. It is important this open space be managed by the owner. ECC is particularly concerned with the introduction of invasive species and requests the developer take special care to control and eradicate any existing or new growth as part of the maintenance plan. The landscape plan has many large trees, including maples and elms located within small islands within the parking lot. ECC questions if this is an appropriate place for these large canopy trees. Some of these islands appear to be as small as only eight feet in width. ECC would like to see a more diverse selection of large canopy trees in the landscape plan. Thirty-six percent of the trees are varieties of maple trees. We know what happened to the ash. ECC would like to see more elm trees in the planting, possibly on Elm Street, within the tree belt where possible. Some of the water quality basin features appear to be different from an earlier plan, including the location and the number of stone check dams and the size or the outlet. The page LS1 shows the note, "existing tree to remain, be removed." Could the developer clarify if those trees will be removed or remain? This is in a number of locations along Elm Street, between the main entrance and the right-turn-only entrance. ECC would like to suggest underground electric service to the complex, so any trees along the tree belt will not conflict with any overhead power lines and therefore have to be cut in the future and maimed by the power company. There were some other things that were brought up tonight that were of concern, but a lot of people spoke about them already. The swale, I don't know how that's going to be maintained, if that's going to run water off the property, is it going to be mowed? I believe it's, if I can remember properly, the grass seed that's going to be in that swale is not a wetland mix, but that, you guys could check that. But other than that, I can't think of what the other things were. Thank you. Oh, loading and unloading zones, I don't know, you haven't mentioned that at all for all these property, all these, you know, things. Nothing was mentioned where trucks are going to load and unload. I know it was a big concern at one of your more recent meetings.
Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? One more time, anyone else like to speak? Hearing none? Would you like to come back and address any of these concerns?
First, let me say, obviously, we appreciate comments from the neighbors, and obviously in terms of how we, over the past couple of years, has worked on and devised the plan, we've tried to be sensitive to their concerns. There's a couple, there's some technical things that I think Dave would speak to with regard to drainage and water tables and that sort of thing. Couple of things I wanted to talk about quickly. One is the open space. Obviously, our special use permit plan shows it is designated open space. Once you approve the plan, and once you approve it as a special use permit, it's part of the permit, it's part of what's recorded, it will run with the land records. We certainly have no problem working with staff to design some sort of restrictive covenants if the commission think that's necessary. Our basic intent at this point is to do some minimal maintenance on the open space, maybe mow a few areas of it, I think you were thinking Frank, and you might amplify that, but other than that is to sort of let it become passive, strictly passive open space. Terms of people accessing it, my guess is they probably are accessing it probably from Montclair at this point, you know, because it's a public, it's a public road, and you sort of use it as a cut-through. Obviously, once this develops, that's going to change dramatically. It's no longer really available as a cut-through, I mean, there's businesses operating there. It'll obviously be fairly well-monitored and so forth. So that problem will, it seems to me, will self-correct. And if it doesn't, we would address it in some way. I know Frank was thinking of doing some work up towards the Montclair area, maybe you can clarify that. So, I mean, I think all of that can be addressed. I did also want to touch, I don't know if Dave does, on the issue of the drive-through, which is mentioned by the commission. Mentioned by members of the public. We think we can take some of those comments in context and do some revision. One is, as you, as one of the commissioners suggested, maybe lower the profile of the canopy, so that sort of, it's not as high and it doesn't therefore allow sound to travel. Another is to, as Dave suggested, increase the, and put a berm in that area and increase the plantings a bit, so that we come to a point where we're pretty much sheltering that from the one abutting house there, which is really the one impacted. And perhaps that can be a condition of approval for staff review, and if, obviously, if it needs to come back here, because we're sort of at loggerheads with staff, we can do that. I know Dave wanted to address, I think, some of the comments with regard to, I think there were several comments on drainage, and I think it's important that we sort of address those in the basins. I'll let you do that, Dave.
Okay.
And maybe the traffic, or we can have Scott do the traffic?
Yeah, we'll have Scott talk about the traffic, just so we don't get feedback. Mr. Parent, lives at 8 St. Thomas Street, I was listening to his comments, and what I would suggest happen is that as far as the drainage in his backyard that he maybe experienced, and I will visit with Mr. Parent and find out what the heck is going on, and make sure that there's nothing that we're doing that's going to, you know, worsen that situation, hopefully we can solve it. As far as the design of the detention basin, it does have pockets of wet bottom, that was worked out with the Wetlands Commission. What we're going to do is, on the bottom of the basin, we're going to have, we're going to apply a layer of basically impervious, almost, topsoil, silty topsoil at the bottom, which prevents that water from seeping down into the groundwater. It's very effective, we've done this many, many times. And I often heard for many years, the worries about the stagnant water in these basins, well, these basins become an enormous habitat all unto themselves, they're very successful in doing that, and what they draw is, they'll draw lots of frog populations and bird populations and things of that nature, which mosquitoes don't get along with very well. So I've never, I've put detention basins successfully in very intense residential developments all over, including the town of Enfield, never had a mosquito problem with them. If anything, the mosquitoes have a tendency to die off, because other critters who like to eat mosquitoes like wet-bottomed detention basins. So it's kind of an interesting, it's been studied for many, many years, and it's really not going to be an issue. But I don't believe we're going to have any issues with, you know, impacts to any of the neighbors, but Mr. Parent came forward this evening, he's expressed concerns, and I will make it a personal pledge that we will be contacting him soon, and we will, you know, integrate him into the plan, so to speak.
Along those lines, do you have any boring plans that you did? Did you do any borings to figure out exactly what the swales might be and where the groundwater table really is, in terms of, you know, if the groundwater table's down 20 feet, you know, your detention basin isn't going to make any difference at all? If the groundwater table is really down three feet, and you're cutting five feet into the, you know, the groundwater, you know, a five-foot depression for your detention basin, then obviously you're just, you're going to intercept that groundwater table. So, you know, obviously it would be beneficial to know exactly where that ground table would be, and possibly when you're doing your site renovations, or you're remolding, you know, the platform for the new, you know, use, that, you know, you have an idea of what you're going to encounter when you get there. Ideally, you know, Enfield is just like a sandy, you know, silty material, so, you know, it should be fairly porous, but, you know, obviously, once you start hitting the groundwater table, you have no place to go.
Yeah, based upon the, we haven't done a formal boring plan, but based upon the historical soil tables, you know, data for this area, and my experience in working out throughout this whole commercial area, we're going to be seasonally in groundwater probably about four feet. So, again, one of the benefits of, people will argue this, but one of the benefits of putting commercial developments in is it definitely drops the groundwater table long-term, because when you have large, open areas that are flat, you know, rainfall transfers directly into groundwater elevations pretty quickly, because it has nowhere else to go, it just falls through and gets in the groundwater. Whereas when you have a large, impervious areas and everything, you have a tendency to cut that mechanism off and direct it to where you want it to go. So many, many times I've seen, we build commercial properties and it actually lowers the groundwater table in the entire area, and I think that's what's going to happen here. So again, I don't have any concerns with causing impacts to the neighbors, I think we'll actually be able to improve it a bit with the swales we have proposed and the, a very positive outfall from the site that doesn't exist now. And at least with that one particular property owner, we'll give him special attention since he's obviously expressed concerns. Other thing I wanted to talk about was the second drive, there was a couple of comments regarding that. We really think that's important. Your traffic safety officer didn't have a big issue with it, and we don't think the state will either. It's just very uncomfortable for me, from a professional point of view, to have only one access point into a site. one access point into a site. We could develop too many others, too many scenarios where that's not a great idea. And one of them is, I would just assume for any tractor-trailers that come into the site to do deliveries, to allow, they're going to go back to the highway. So, this is going to give them a nice, easy way to get back out to the highway without coming down our nice driveway and clogging up that area, sitting in there with the other cars. And God forbid, there's an accident in our driveway, the police and the ambulances and things need a secondary way to get in there, and this is, this is what does that, so. And it's restricted. I understand, there was one comment made about Five Guys, but that's the only way in and out of Five Guys. I'm not a big fan of right in, right in, right out driveways when it's the only way to get in and out of a site, because there's a lot of cheaters out there, we get it, we all know, we've all seen the cheaters. There's a few identifying themselves for the public record, but this, but at least, at least this is not the primary driveway in any way, shape, or form. This is a secondary driveway, and I think we should, I think we should let it be. And let me see if I have anything else I wanted to say.
The dumpsters on building four?
Yeah, you know, if the commission feels strongly about that, we can look at other options, but, I mean, they're going to be well shielded and landscaped and they're, you know, they're there, you know. I think if you want to restrict the operations, probably a better way to address that than thinking moving it 50 feet in one direction or the other is going to make a difference, you know, so. I think it's better to do it in an, since it's a special permit, you can put any operations restrictions you want on there, so I would suggest you do that. And as far as the selection of trees, I mean, our landscape architect, Ken La Forge, has been landscaping these kinds of facilities for 30 years. I think he's done a good job in selecting materials. And I don't have any concerns with that. There is, we don't like, we like various different species on sites because there are diseases floating around, so that's why there's so many different types of evergreens proposed and deciduous, you know, canopy trees. Maple is a very hardy tree, and I haven't seen one really die yet. I've seen a lot of the specialty trees that don't do very well, but maples are not one of them. And as far as the buffer goes, if you look at the plans, I know this, I don't expect the public to review our landscaping plans and even understand them. That's not reasonable. But if you look at the planting plans, there's a really extensive evergreen planting along both sides, and there's a wide mix of evergreens. Our initial installation would be six to seven feet, which is nursery grown. Those trees can grow 30, 40 feet high very quickly. So, I really think we've got enough plant material. You get to the situation, we've actually had situations where commissions have asked us or conditioned us to add more plant materials, and that's almost self-defeating, because what happens is, there's only so much, you know, there's only so many evergreen trees you can plant in an area before, within a few years, they start really competing with each other, and then all of a sudden they go sour on you, because they don't grow really well. Did you ever go to an old Christmas tree farm, you know, like that hasn't been cut in a long time? You start to see the trees around them start to have trouble. They need spacing, they need, you know, in order to really succeed and grow. So, I've been involved in this where we just keep stuffing plant material in, and it kind of looks good for a short period of time, and then all of a sudden, after a couple of years, it starts going sour on you, because they start killing each other and they start being in competition with each other. So, I would just ask you to have confidence that we know what we're doing, and it's going to, it's going to look really, really good. And also, you know, there's the practicality of the matter, is if we have to come back in here for other special permits or add in the additional areas that we have, you guys are going to be sitting there holding us accountable for anything that we haven't done well the first, the first time around. So, again, I would just ask you to have confidence in the way we've laid this thing out. It's, I really feel strongly it's going to work, and it's going to work really well.
Because I guess there's a couple of other things that I would like you to address, and I guess one of the gentlemen was wondering if there was a study, the traffic study included the access to, I guess, St. Thomas, the in and outs of St. Thomas, and how difficult it was to utilize that street access. So, I'd like to see that addressed. Then another one is the loading dock, the loading issues in terms of how are you going to get your supplies into the building? I noticed at the back of the buildings, there's a lot, a significant grade change, there's, you know, a four or five foot sometimes grade change in the back, so I guess all the loading of all the, you know, the upper level stores is going to have to occur from the front of the store? And, you know, could you sort of address that?
As far as the loading goes particularly on the front two buildings is really the only concern, is we're looking at that, that's going to be, we're looking at the possibility of changing the grading a little bit back there. It's going to be tenant-driven, sort of, where's, how are the tenants going here? If it's going to be one tenant in the whole building, we have a little less concern. If it's going to be multiple tenants, we're going to try to avoid putting any kind of ramping back there, so we may mess with the grading in that back parking lot there, but we're, you know, we'll have that issue worked out. But we've designated spaces on, for each building as a designated loading area. The big building in the back is at grade, the bank isn't a concern. So, it's really only the two front buildings, and again, we're going to wait and see how that's tenant-driven. If it's multiple tenants, we're going to change the grading in that back parking lot a little bit.
Especially with handicap parking in terms of, you know, that's.
Oh, that's all worked out, that's not an issue. Yeah, we've got, we've got, we've got that all worked out to make sure that works right. And there are no steep parking areas in the parking lot at all. Let Scott answer the traffic questions.
Good evening, whoops. Just make sure this is on. Good evening. For the record, my name is Scott Hesketh, I'm a licensed engineer in the state of Connecticut with the firm of F.A. Hesketh and Associates, and we did write a traffic report dated April 11th, 2019, which is part of the application. In terms of the access at St. Thomas Street, Route 220 in this area across the site front is currently two lanes in each direction. The intersection of Route 220 and Palomba Drive is operated by a traffic signal. What we're proposing to do is to widen the Route 220 to provide opposing left-turn lanes in each direction, so that we have a place for left-turning vehicles to wait while there's a gap in the opposing traffic stream in order to make a left-hand turn in. We'll also modify the traffic signal to allow advanced left-turn lane phase, so that the first 10 or 15 seconds of the cycle, left turns will be able to go unopposed, and we can clear out a lot of traffic in that way. Now, Route 220 to the west of us is a five-lane roadway. It has a left-turn lane in the eastbound direction for Freshwater Boulevard. As you get to the, as you get to the east of St. Thomas, there's another left-turn lane which is added for the Asnuntuck Community College and the Five Guys as well. So, when we do the widening for our left-turn lane, we will have additional width in front of St. Thomas Street. We are installing, or we will be painting a short section of left-turn lane for traffic to enter that street as well. That's, it's going to provide a little safety, a little opportunity for left turns, a safe place for them to wait while waiting a gap in the traffics, in the traffic stream. Unfortunately, there's not a high volume of traffic into and out of the street, it's too close to other signalized intersections, so that the roadway itself couldn't be signalized even if we wanted to, and we're not proposing that, but we should provide a little bit of additional capacity and safety for people getting in, at least into, into that roadway. And hopefully with the improvements of this location, we'll shorten up the queues just a little bit, and maybe we'll make it easier for people to get out of that roadway during peak hours as well. So, that's our response to the traffic question. Again, we've done a full impact study, you have it, we looked at background traffic, site-generated traffic volumes, capacity analysis, we've viewed the site distances, accident data. One of the things about our intersection, the accidents which are occurring at that location are two kinds, rear-end accidents, and there's a lot of side-swipe same-direction accidents. The rear-end accidents are typical at signalized intersections. The side-swipe same-direction accidents are the people that Mr. Ziyak's talked about. You're in that left lane, and the guy in front of you wants to turn left, you realize, I don't want to turn left. You swerve to the right to get around him, and you side-swipe the guy going past you in that lane. So, we hope with the addition of the left-turn lane at this location, we should see a reduction in those types of accidents, and hopefully, maybe a slight reduction in the rear-end type accidents as well. So, although we're adding additional traffic to the intersection, these improvements should provide a better operational effectiveness and improved level of safety at the intersection.
Just a quick question, one of the, will this be, have a crosswalk and basically that, you know, the little button pushing and everything for people to walk across?
Yes. Because the intersection currently has mast-arm signals out there, we're going to end up replacing all the traffic signal equipment there. We will be proposing, well, if the town so desires and the state allows, we will have crossings here. We're proposing crosswalks. Typically, when you have crosswalks, you want them to be pedestrian-exclusive, the exclusive pedestrian phases, so somebody can walk up, push the button. All the vehicles at the intersection will be stopped, and there'll be a countdown signal nowadays, and people crossing the intersection can do so on a countdown signal. We think that's probably the most appropriate way to do it. It will steal a little bit of capacity from the intersection, but it will provide an extra level of safety for pedestrians. And there'll be crosswalks in, on three of the legs of the intersection, sees the most appropriate. Yeah, across Palomba Drive, across the one side, across Route 220, and across the side driveway as well.
Ginny?
I have two thoughts, it's not on the traffic, but just before I forget about them again. The dumpsters, maybe I missed this, but first of all, I want to say how nice it was that you took most of the concerns of the citizens to heart, because they live there and Elm Street has gotten a lot, lot busier. But the dumpsters, I'd like, did anybody address limiting the time for the dumpsters to be picked up? In other words, set time? You can't come at 2:00?
We haven't set that yet. We haven't gotten there.
Okay. And the other thing is, some of us remember the Krick school berm issue and Connecticut mulch, and if you look at page 113, you'll see that the berms can't be more than three to five feet in height, and they give you the maximum three to one. So, I heard six feet mentioned, and I, you know, I'm not going to quibble about a foot, but I just would hate to see you guys put it in, and then somebody else come along and say, "Ha, we had to take, the town had to take Krick to court to get him to lower the berm." So, you don't want a 23-foot berm, I'm sure the neighbors don't either, but just in case.
Well, it really depends upon where you measure the berm. So, we'll meet the regulations, but there might be areas that are a little taller. But we'll cleverly disguise.
Remember, 23 feet, 60 feet.
Well, no, 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 no. No, no, there's nothing more ugly than a 20-foot dirt berm in front of your property.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, since we're on berms, can I just mention something? So, will there be a watering system on these berms at all? Because I've seen berms put in and the plants are dead within six to nine months, especially the hemlocks.
Yeah, I think we're going to maintain it for the timeframe it's needed to be done. If we have to replace them, we will. But there's no irrigation system, it's actually for that entire side. But we will make sure we're responsible for it, to make sure it maintains that way, because obviously we want to maintain it for the integrity of the property itself anyways.
Perfect. Thank you.
I just have a couple more, if you want me to volunteer a few more.
Sure.
And I'll be the first one to say, I appreciate all the comments in the public myself, thank you for saying so. And I appreciate what they said about, we've been very accommodating to some degree. It's not always easy, but there's always a way, and if you have enough time, you try to figure things out. So, let me go through a few people that I've met over the years, and needless to say, I could probably hit a few people directly. Mr. Greeney, thank you for your comments, I appreciate it. No, there's nothing going on in Carroll Street, it will not, and we're going to have that be part of, I believe, our restricted access, and we'll make sure it's actually recorded such. Same thing with the back area where the conservation area is. I've also met on multiple occasions with the two last people that Ms. Woodson mentioned, I've also met with Ms. Woodson over time as well, and I appreciate that as well, because we did talk about that. Mrs. Estrada and Mr. O'Brien, I just met with them last week again, just to make sure we had an understanding. They're the last two and the only two on the very end. This property has, because of the way it's been mowed and the way it's been maintained over time, it actually produces a hay-like substance that depending on when it germinates and when you cut it, ends up puddling up and then running over, be it their fences, their trees, and right down Montclair on these big dust bowls. I mean, it's, you can't call them dust bunnies, you can't call them tumbleweeds, they're much bigger. And because of that, we actually talked about how do we want to have it maintained? So, in a conversation with them, they do have fences on either side, there's a small horse fence that used to be there that we just removed, because it was unsightly and it was damaged anyways. We're going to be putting a line of arborvitae that we're going to break up that one look, but also it's going to stop other people from thinking there's actually an area there you can congregate. That's number one. We're going to put it back a little bit, so we encourage the town to have DPW when they're pushing snow, to push it on that area of the property. Because they also have icing, which nobody has mentioned, but that's something that we talked about ourselves. So, it's actually not going to be right up against the edging of the property and the curbing, it'll be something that we can actually go, so you can actually have a snow stockpile from the town naturally bring it out there. And they had some ponding issues in the back end of Montclair that I think would be very helpful. In addition to that, in talking to those two neighbors, we came up with an idea that we think would be very helpful, since we have a conservation easement there, we didn't want to mow the whole area at all times. They actually had the same concerns that were mentioned here today, that some of it grown in is actually a positive thing, in the sense that it'll maintain itself, and it may not be the type of trees perfectly to have a wall, but you're talking about 400-plus feet from Montclair just to the back area of the, of the conservation area. You're talking about a very long area. We talked about maybe cutting the first 75 or 100 feet and maintaining that once or twice a year and cutting, so number one, it takes away those tumbleweed effects, but also to make sure that they also have that little bit of a depth that they would appreciate having, that they've always had for such a long time. And we do the same thing on the western, on the eastern side, you know, to maybe a smaller area, but there's nice growth that's already there, but we'll maintain an open area to just kind of chop that area down a little bit and make sure it's maintained. But growing in the center is one thing that they wanted to do, also to make sure that there was nothing that we, they can't see that development. We think that would also prevent people from walking through, it would stop people from thinking that it's even allowed by planting the trees in the front anyways, and then of course maintaining it and having it be more often where people are watching it, I think it'll be a little more clear for everybody that it should not be something they do. We're also going to post no trespassing signs, which would be appropriate anyways. It was earlier mentioned that somebody wanted to know who's going to own it, that we approached the town many months ago, it was supposed to be private ownership, the town does not want to have to maintain it, they don't want to have the expense to the budget, and they want to make sure that we're responsible. So, all those things, it kind of, it's on our shoulders like it or not, but the town's going to enforce it on our shoulders, as we will too, and Paul actually writes up for the conservation easement and have that be accomplished as well. Above the houses and, you know, any kind of vagrants, we've had a very nice relationship with both the fire departments in town and the police departments, be it the state police, be it the corrections officers, they like to have real-world environment. So, once they do their training that we've offered the properties for, there's nobody living in the house, there's no vagrants there now, maybe people would walk through, and I think David mentioned, once that gets built up, that's not going to happen in the future. Once we grow in the center, that's not going to happen anymore. But also when we take the houses down, it's really going to open it up, and really there's not going to be any purpose for anybody to be there, and having us maintain it responsibly and repeatedly, I think that'll actually be something that would probably solve that problem very quickly and probably in an appropriate way. It was also mentioned earlier than Mr. McGreeney, he mentioned as well, Mr. Greeney doesn't want any lights in his yard, and we actually made it a point that there are no wall packs on these buildings, on the sides, in the back, and so even at Montclair, you can't see a little star in the back there from a building light. It's all going to be, as David mentioned, the lighting plan is actually going to be focused down, these LEDs are amazing, what you can actually do for measurement on the light pollution that would have otherwise been there, so we didn't even want to have that be part of it as well. So, we really tried to think about those details before we even got to you, to make sure it's not even part of the plan that we have to do a modification for. I think I got most of the ones that I was supposed to hit, I know we were all talking back and forth on a few things. Let me see if I got real quick here. Second driveway you covered, the designation for the open space, as I mentioned, that is going to be our responsibility, and we will maintain that ourselves. But again, we did meet with the neighbors on that point multiple times, and they seem to think that would be a better way to handle it, and making sure that the big field that's out there now that causes all that extra blowover growth would be eliminated completely on a year-round basis, not just during that one time. So, I think we tried to hit everything, I think we got it, unless I missed something. But again, I wanted to tell everybody again that I appreciate all the comments here and also in the public.
Madam Chair, I have one more question. In terms of, when we mentioned fencing between, you know, I guess, your property and adjacent residences, in terms of, is there going to be anything that's going to prevent, you know, we're going to have 279 parking spaces, and you know, in we're gonna have 279 parking lot spaces and, you know, in terms of, you know, in that front southern part of the, I guess, land. And, you know, is there gonna be anything that's gonna prevent anybody from, like, walking from the parking lot directly into their property? You know, is there gonna be some deterrent that's gonna, you know, prevent that from happening? And, you know, because sometimes, you know, it might be sort of a cedar mulch or some kind of a mulch that says, you know, okay, you know, this is where, you know, the delineation from, you know, retail area to residential area occurs. And, you know, and again, you know, I'm not saying that there's gonna be a lot of, you know, it's like if you're having a picnic in your backyard and it's a Saturday afternoon and there's a lot of cars and everything, you know, going there that, you know, and somebody, you know, you don't want to, you want your privacy. You know, you don't want to have the possibility of, you know, anybody actually coming into your yard from, you know, the adjacent property-
Sure.
-during those periods of time, you know.
I think on most of the property, there's gonna be a berm. First of all, somebody's gonna have to cross, they're gonna noticeably walk across a berm through the bushes that we have that are zigzagged all the way almost across the property. There's, you know, I was writing down with David because even I forgot how many trees we're talking about. We're planting 378 just trees, not the underbrush, not the lower bushes we have. You know, there's an amazing amount of greenery on this property. In the back, they're gonna have to cross the wetlands detention area or the water retention detention area. They're gonna be walking through that, they're gonna have to go through that one way or the other. And most everybody already has a fence that's there, but I appreciate what you said because I think they're gonna have to knowingly do this. And if they knowingly do this, I'm not sure how to prevent them from doing something. They shouldn't be walking through somebody's backyard anyways. But there certainly will be a dividing line where our property or that development will be there. And if they're gonna be doing something that they should not be doing, I'd love to know how to stop that on any property that we have. That would be something that's there, but they're knowingly not gonna go there by accident if they're looking at it that way.
Yeah, and it's one of those kind of things where, you know, I guess what we don't want to do is put an added burden onto residences if all of a sudden they feel threatened that, you know, there's, you know, a possibility. I don't feel as secure, you know. Before, it used to be all open space. Now there's a driveway there, there's cars running back there and, you know, I can't do my sunbathing or whatever I want to do in my backyard, you know. And it's, you know, and again, it's one of those kind of things where, you know, people, some people like to do that. And right now, there's nothing to prevent them from doing that. And, you know, if this development goes in there, you know, all of a sudden, you know, it's kind of an invasion of your privacy. And I just wanted to make sure that, you know, all of a sudden, people aren't spending, you know, to put in 150 feet of fencing at their own expense because they feel insecure or not safe with what's there right now.
I think it's in my best interest not to comment on the bathing part. I think from that. In regards to otherwise, you know, it was mentioned also by one of the people in the public, I think, I think it was Patricia mentioned also about vagrants. We're not gonna allow anybody on the property, this is gonna be lit, it's gonna be maintained. Most likely, there's gonna be cameras of some sort on the property. Many tenants actually use that now. And we're not gonna allow anybody on the property that shouldn't be there. That should be something that'll be maintained. If somebody's gonna be coming off the property and they're gonna be invading somebody's yard and just like if somebody's there now, we will encourage them to make sure that doesn't happen and call the police if necessary. We're gonna put up signs ourselves to make sure that there's no trespassing signs, everybody coming off the property. There's a berm that's on the other side of Carroll's access road that we, you know, everybody thought was gonna be there, but it's not gonna be there. But we'll do our part to make sure that it's maintained appropriately. Nobody being there shouldn't be there.
I think the town also has that 911 system that works very well. Very well.
I can assure you, no one's gonna be able to come in from the north. It'll look like a scene from Papillon back there if you try to cross that. And in about two or three years, that will be a wild no man's wall.
And the other thing is, of course, businesses like the bank have numerous cameras, inside, outside, everywhere. So, and that's actually very common with all kinds of tenants now that they have outdoor and they'll probably be the same around the back of the building, to be honest with you. That's just sort of what you have with commercial buildings these days for protection. So.
You can't legislate stupid stuff.
Okay.
So, I have just one more thing and I just wanted to clarify. One of the neighbors, I think, was concerned or confused on the square footage. They mentioned in the 70s, there's, the square footage that we're proposing tonight is 55,796 square feet, which is lower than what we had on the master plan originally, so. But it's never been in the 70s and it never will be in the 70s.
I'm gonna open it one more time to the public. Anyone have any questions, concerns? Anyone have any more questions, concerns? One more time, anyone, questions, concerns? Okay, hearing none. I'm gonna close public hearing 2942. Okay, I did it. I made you happy?
He didn't bang it.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's just not me. Okay.
Now you stay hammered.
So.
You know, I'm gonna make a motion that we table, you know, public hearing 2942 to our next meeting, because what I want to do, I would like to, you know, make sure that our site-specific conditions include all our concerns and, you know, are accurately defined in terms of, you know, I know that we got this, you know, letter from the Conservation Commission, you know, we have to talk about the hours of operation for the dumpsters and, you know, sort of just take a look at, you know, other things, you know, again, you know, maybe put another condition for noise travel beyond, you know, a certain distance, you know, off, you know, the property so that we definitely address all the concerns that we have.
I don't think you can do noise. I think there's a noise ordinance already. And it's, in case anybody has a future problem, noise ordinance is the police department. They'll say no, but it is.
If it's a dumpster pickup, we can already do that right now?
I mean, we could set hours for the dumpster.
We need to wait two weeks to do the dumpster ordinance.
Right.
So, if you want to have them not before 9:00 and not after 3, then you can do that.
Yeah, and we're more than agreeable to do that. We think it's reasonable for most projects that you have.
I mean, if we feel comfortable that we can get all our conditions down, you know, I think that, you know, we had a lot of discussions and there was a lot of, you know-
That was really the only one I had any concern about in the first place.
How does staff feel about concerns? Lori?
Lori.
Lori. Staff?
Yes?
Do you have any concerns? Rich has concerns and we've-
In terms of site-specific, you know, requirements, you know, the only one I see on here is-
The only thing that I've found was the dumpsters and then-
Well, the only one in our draft resolution is the fences to be installed along designated snow pile areas and that's the only thing that's there.
So, there was enlargement of the eastern portion of the landscaping adjacent to the drive-through.
And then we're talking about, I mean, and we're talking about berms along, you know, at that eastern end, you know, southeastern end of the thing. I mean, there's, you know, I would like to see something specifically, you know-
Well, do you want to, do you want to close it? Well, the public hearing is closed.
Right, right. So basically, all we have to do is vote on it, but what I would like to, I know I'm gonna vote in a positive, but I would just want to make sure that, you know, we have all the site-specific conditions so that, you know, if push comes to shove, it's definitely there in a responsible manner rather than, you know, okay, let's just run it through and, and I don't think that waiting two weeks is gonna delay your schedule for what you're doing.
I would say no, but obviously, the bank is the one that's actually pressing us. They want to get going, they want to be in that-
But I think, you know, again, you know, we had the discussion about lowering the canopy of, you know, the bank, you know, so.
We agree.
And there's so many things that we discussed and I think that, you know, seeing that we're not gonna see additional drawings, what we need to do is make sure that we include all our concerns, you know, on paper rather than say, you know, geez, you know, we missed something. And that's just my concern, you know. In terms of if everybody else thinks that we can do it in the next 15 minutes, I think we're sort of fooling ourselves because, you know, we have to get the wording right and everything. And I think that staff could do a good job, you know, going back through our minutes or our discussions and including all our concerns.
Yep. I also just want to note, the conditions you see at the end of the packet of information for this are actually the Wetlands Commission conditions. So if you go to page 1, 2, 3, 4, there are other conditions over there that are for the planning and zoning approval. So there are some site-specific conditions already listed there. But yeah, if you want to table the decision and have staff draft up a more inclusive list based on the minutes of this meeting, we can certainly do that.
I would feel comfortable. I'm not sure if everybody else would. A second?
Whatever, whatever works for them is, whatever, whatever works for the commission will-
We can take the heat off of you and to say, we're okay with the two weeks. If that would be easier for you, we're okay with that. You know, and make it be much more comfortable. And even David also volunteered that we want to make sure that berm is next to the bank area as well. We agree with that.
I know. I listed the berm on the east side of the bank building.
To make it easier, if it's easier for you, it's easier for us. We understand that.
Lower the bank canopy, dumpsters.
I would definitely, again, I'll make that motion again.
Okay, you want to table it?
You want to, yeah, you want to second it?
I will second your motion to table. Okay.
Okay, any comments, discussion?
Well, I understand Rich's concern, but just based on the history of the buildings that have been done, they've complied with everything that's been asked of them, so I don't have any major concerns, but that's just me, so.
I think, you know, like Jen said, they can take the minutes and what needs to be added can be.
Right. And that's what we're saying, is that we would like them to add it.
But we don't need to table it to do that. It can be added after we-
We can't vote on it because we have to include all the site-specific conditions in our vote. So in order to do that, we'd have to stay here till, you know, 11:00 to knock everything down and I'd rather do it, you know, have staff do it than not.
If you would like, we can have a pizza come in and take some time. But, you know, I'm actually trying, I'm trying to think of how many items there would be that you need to address. I agree and we understand there's standard conditions as well. If, you know, if it's one of those things, it's fine. We'd love to get it tonight, obviously, that's what we're here for.
Be the berm from the bank.
But if it doesn't, it's up to you.
All right.
Hours for the dumpsters.
Lower the bank canopy.
Lowering the bank canopy.
We need to make sure that any, the, no, we did the dumpster times. What about?
We already did that.
You'd have to withdraw your motion if we heard.
I'm just trying to think of what the sound from the bank, is there, because I know it has to comply with the noise ordinance.
Oh, that's what the buffer's gonna be on the-
And we can't, there is a noise ordinance, so we can't put any condition into that-
That's what I'm trying to say, I'm trying to say.
They can talk to the bank about it themselves and they already are aware.
The bank is doing a virtual, they're not doing a pneumatic system. So this is all electronic. So this is not gonna be noisy as it's traditional. They're very interested in doing it, but they do it with a live person. So it's on, just on a one-on-one, private conversation. So it's much more quiet than people are expecting. They're very state-of-the-art, they're not in town yet. So they're very, they're very much looking to bringing a brand-new state-of-the-art branch to come to Enfield.
Okay. So.
What else we got?
What else? There was, they've talked, they've, they're already talking about their, so it's the hours of dumpster operation, the lowering of the canopy, the berm for the bank.
Conservation Commission comments?
Oh, Conservation comments.
Shoot, there's more. That's what I'm saying, is that?
That was-
Well, do we have, is there a maintenance plan for the open space on the plans?
There is.
I saw a maintenance plan, but I don't know how specific is that maintenance plan for what we, was discussed this evening. What we talked about this evening, you said you were gonna mow to this point, you were going to keep this a certain way. Is that exactly what's being stated on the maintenance plan here for that? Because I think-
Yeah, I don't think it's included specifically on the plan.
The maintenance plan for that.
The maintenance plan for the open space. There's a maintenance plan, but I think it-
It just addresses-
It addresses the, you know, the plantings and the berm and-
Because I think that's an important piece, is to have the, the maintenance for the open space. And then, we know that the open space, it's been dedicated or it's going to be dedicated once we-
Right.
I think it gets dedicated once-
Once we pass.
Exactly. I think it goes in that order. We just obligate ourselves to make sure that we follow along. And the maintenance would be on the open space for that open area.
Yeah.
It's as needed, no matter what. It's not that we do it once and that's all, we're done with it. It's what we have, but we're limiting that area even by what the neighbors have asked for.
Yeah.
Because they don't want to have it outgrow, but they don't need the whole thing to be a field. They don't want that. They want to have it be where there's an open space, where there's some depth. So we'd leave it and do it as necessary.
Mary had mentioned about the maintenance plan. That was the second item on her list. ECC requests a maintenance plan for the open space be included as part of the application. So, it'd be like a developer's agreement, just put something down and give it to Lori and-
Yeah, I think we can do that and that's the understanding, like I said, dealing with Montclair as well, that was what we were desiring.
We should be able to comment on what they're gonna propose. In terms of, right now, we don't even know what they're gonna propose.
We can't. It's closed.
You cannot accept any more information. You've closed the public hearing. As a matter of fact, you shouldn't be having conversations with the applicant at this point. Without being mean about it, I mean, I understand what you're doing here, but, so what I could propose is that we can, you can set that as a condition of approval, that the maintenance plan for the rear open space be approved by staff. So, I hear lower bank, the lower bank canopy, increased landscaping east of the canopy. You haven't really discussed the dumpster hours. I'm not sure what you were planning on that. Condition of approval for maintenance plan to be approved by staff. Comments by John Kabibbo should be addressed.
Is there anything else?
Didn't Charlie suggest the dumpster hours be-
I just said, not before 9, not after 3.
And they were agreeable with it and with something else.
9 to 3?
8 to 4 or whatever.
Oh.
That's kind of late for garbage, but-
We decide how, how low the canopy has to be.
My garbage comes at 4:30, so, or 5. And I live in a residential.
Yeah.
I would say no less than 6 or 7.
I know I heard a lot about lowering the canopy on the bank. Did anybody mention how much or?
Just to keep it a lower facade than the main frame.
Yeah, the only thing I said is that on existing building drawings, it shows around The only thing I said is that on existing building drawings, it shows around 11'4", I think. So...
It's lowering... Well, the question is, is lowering going...
11'2".
Lowering it caused...
The main plate height was at 16'6", and then the secondary canopy height was at 11'2". So, it was five feet lower. And the picture that we saw was an even, you know, elevation. So, it was five feet difference, which is a significant difference.
Yeah.
So, I mean, you know, and again, it's, you know, whatever, you know, as long as we get all these conditions and, you know... I'm just skeptical that, you know, we're wasting our time, you know, when staff can actually go through and pick out everything so that we don't miss anything and...
Well, even if we need to do that, we still need to go through this process because we need to know exactly what you want to see.
Right. But you can get a little more specific and get all the verbiage in a correct manner so that we don't necessarily have to stumble upon, you know, how we're going to present it.
Were there any other conditions that the commission can think of that they'd like to see in here? Either tonight or in two weeks?
No. Anybody else?
And if you could determine the hours for the dumpsters, one way or the other?
I... Yeah. I have faith in staff, you know. I think that staff is capable of taking what we've said and putting it in the conditions of approval. And if not, we'll just hang them by the thumbs until they turn red.
There we go.
Or we'll see it in the minutes.
I mean, we could make dumpster hours from 8:00 AM to 5:00. I'm sure by 5:00 o'clock, they're gone. I mean... Or not 8 to...
Forget you're in a residential area. Nine, you know, some people are second shift or have babies, so nine is a little late.
Or eight to eight. Eight to eight.
My only thought on the height issue is where accessibility for a vehicle, just to make sure.
I was thinking the same thing, so...
All right. I just threw some numbers out. Eight to eight, eight in the morning to eight at night. I don't know.
Eight to five is good.
Eight to five. All right. Eight to five. Make up my...
Pick it up when they can get there.
All right. Okay. So, the hours of the dumpsters would be eight to five. There. The dumpster hours are set. Anything else that we can...
Going to make a motion then?
He made a motion to table. You seconded it.
Yep. So, now we need to...
So, we need to...
Look forward...
So, I'm confused. Are we going to let our staff, you know, take all our comments now and include them as, you know, site-specific comments? Or are we going to regurgitate what we just said and try to get everything?
Well, they have in the past. We've always allowed staff... We tell them what we want, and they make it look nice.
Right. But we tell them.
And we've told them.
I made a list.
All right. Okay. In that case, I'll withdraw my motion to table.
Second.
All right. Okay. I can't make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve public hearing 2942 for 143, 145, 147, 149, and 153 Elm Street and Lot 72 Carroll Street. As noted in the June 13, 2019 draft resolution prepared by the Planning Department with 33 conditions and the addition of dumpster hours being 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, lowering the bank canopy, the berm on the eastern side of the bank building being included, and a maintenance plan for the open space in the rear of the property. That's it.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion on this?
Were we going to include the Conservation Commission comments too, or...
They weren't on the record when she gave them.
Yeah. But she just read them for the record, but they're not part of site-specific conditions.
You want to make these all?
Well, I think we should review them and see which ones are viable and which ones aren't.
I already looked at them, and I think the only one that definitely was the maintenance plan was really of importance for me, so...
That's going to be part of the maintenance plan.
And I think some of the others were addressed already.
And I think, yeah. And my thing was about the underground electric service. I think that's done automatically now, isn't it? Oh, no. Yes. She's not looking.
All the electrical service is underground already.
It's already buried, so...
Yeah. So... Any other further discussion?
Any comments, Lori, with regards to...
In reading... Okay. I'm sorry. I thought that was on. Most of these could be incorporated into the maintenance plan.
Perfect. Okay. Sounds good.
All right. Anything else?
And seconded, so be ready.
Are we done?
Who made that second?
I seconded.
Charlie seconded.
Thank you.
Okay. Are we ready to vote?
We're ready.
Okay. All in favor? Against? Abstain? So, we have four, four, no, against, zero, against, and one abstained. So...
Reasons for the abstaining?
I think we could have done a better job with a site-specific conditions. I think that we rushed into something that we really didn't need to rush into. I think that the applicant was more than amiable to... For us to get the things right. And, you know, I think that sometimes when you rush into some things, you miss things. And I think we owned all the comments that we heard from the people that took their time to come here today to give us their concerns, that we should address all their concerns. And, you know, we shouldn't... Again, if there was some real pressing manner that we really had to, you know, approve it, I think we could have. But the fact that we had the time and we could have done a better job, that we shouldn't just rush to accomplish things just to get them accomplished if they're not necessarily to the best interest of everybody involved.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, thank you.
I'm sure you will, you know. And I had no concerns. I just wanted, you know, us to do a better job.
Thank you. Okay. Other business?
Okay.
Any other business? Correspondence?
No.
Oh.
Other business?
Commissioner's correspondence. Uh, Commissioner's correspondence? I do.
What else we got here?
She stopped her. Okay. I do have two issues. I'm sure one of them has already been clicked to fix, the swimming pool in the front yard on North Street.
Already heard about it.
Yeah. That was pretty... I was like, "Okay." Yeah. Well, I'm sure they didn't know. But the second one is on South Road, the Tarnow Nursery. I went by there. It looks like they've cleared cut some more than... I don't know if they're now into the wetlands.
They were approved under wetlands to do a certain amount of clearing. Rick has been notified of the work, and he's gone out there. And he's working on enforcement for that property. So, they still have time on their permit to do the work that is required to be done under their approvals there. I personally haven't been out there to see if they're compliant. I know that Rick has, so we'll get a report from Rick at the next meeting.
Yeah. That was the only two... That was like, when I went by there, I'm like, "I don't think that was supposed to happen." But then, it's been a while, so... All right. Yes.
Swimming pool. Is that a corner lot?
Yeah.
That's why.
Well, no. Well, not really.
Is it on two streets?
It's on North Street in the front yard by their front door.
No. North Street, but there's no street on the side?
Like a little pool?
I am... Excuse me. No, we're in meetings still. Yeah. Thank you.
We tried.
Well, the reason I... The reason I ask is because all swimming pools, unless they're little wading pools, have building permits. And Rick Rascelli should not have signed off on that if indeed it's not a corner lot.
I don't think he did if you saw where this is.
No. If it's like an intex, you can put that up without a permit.
No, you can't.
Yeah, you can.
No. No. No, you can't.
No. Let's put it this way. They could jump on their front... They could jump into their pool from their front steps.
From their window.
And from their window.
Be interesting. All right.
Really interesting.
Yeah. So, okay. Other than that... Okay. Director of Plannings report?
I don't have a whole lot. We have continued one item for the next meeting, and that is the Places of Worship. But other than that, we have no applications.
Wow.
I guess it's our summer free time. However, we do have money allocated to start looking for consultants for the POCD and zoning regulations.
Okay.
So, I think that would be a great opportune time to talk about what we'd like to see and what we'd like the consultants to be doing.
Great.
So, read through them both before we get there.
Yep.
Because I know you can't sleep at night, so...
No. Well, actually, it's a great sleeping pill, you know. You open it up and stuff.
So, I mean, you can't do it all at once. You have to kind of like go through one chapter at a time. But, I mean, try to think of, you know...
That's some shit to get rid of.
Do we want to make things easier? Do we want to make it more friendly? Would, you know... There's a number of things that we actually would like to get rid of, things like sellers. What was the other ones?
Yeah. There's a couple items that are just like reoccurring things that come down from the Building Department, sort of conflicts between what people are looking to build and what our regulations say. One being the sellers for certain styles of houses not really being, I guess, pertinent or compatible with the style of house. And then, there's a...
Let's go into Allison.
Oh, the building height for accessory buildings is at 12 feet in the regulations. And if they want to build any higher than that, they have to connect the house. And usually, they do that in the form of a breezeway. You see them all over town, but in talking to the building official, he said that a pretty standard height that is accepted in surrounding towns as well, and their accessory building height regulations is 15 feet. So, it's not a huge jump that they're saying, that they're recommending. But I said I would ask to see if you guys would be open to some sort of amendment, sort of provide some sort of relief to the people who are looking to make these improvements on their property.
These are more of quick fixes, just because just about every time we have a building permit, it comes up. I mean, like the sellers and things like that. And it's like, I'm not sure why we require sellers. It's really not a planning issue.
No. And...
Could we also include beans in lieu of sidewalks?
Yes.
As a quick fix?
Yeah. So, I was looking at that statute, and you can only use that with subdivisions. So, I haven't found one that you could use in commercial businesses. So, I'm going to have to see if there's a way that we could write it into the regulations as something that would be predictable. That's the big thing. It can't be a waiver, but it's got to be predictable. So, you know, maybe it's predictable. If there are no sidewalks within a quarter mile of this, then you could waive it. But if there's sidewalks next door, you have to have them or something like that.
Yeah. Because I think mostly we're talking about not residential zones, but more industrial-type zones where, you know, there are not... There is not going to be a lot of pedestrian traffic. And, you know, it's an isolated condition surrounded by, you know, other properties that are likely zoned, so...
Okay. What were some of the other quick fixes we... Oh, we were... The patios. So, yeah. So, I guess, you know, we've got an applicant that is very interested in having a large outdoor dining area. It's not just dining, though. It's got amusement things like... What's the...
Bachi.
No, not bachi. The...
Cornhole.
The cornhole. Cornhole and a bachi court and probably pool tables or something, stuff like that. But it's outdoor, and it's dining, and so...
And again, without being site-specific, it'd be hard to say, "Yeah, we could do that."
Well, if... I was just looking. It's not a special permit for outdoor, right?
If it's on the landfill.
It is. Okay. So, outdoor dining is a special permit. So, you would... That's how you get your site specific. So, the question is, is can it be more than 50% of the floor area?
We've gotten taken to court for special use permit conditions we put on, and we had to back off.
But we also have zoning ordinances that say your outdoor dining can't be more than...
Yes. Exactly. And so... That's like a little mini golf course where they have the little teeny-tiny, you know...
Eating area?
Eating area. And the rest is all like shoot-your-golf balls, you know?
Entertainment.
Yeah.
I mean, there might be a specific seating area, but it's also other items, so, you know, other amusement types of...
I think Linda's right. It's not, you know, we don't know what it is.
Right.
And you can't... You can't throw generalities out.
Yeah.
Maybe want to see them come in and get more specific.
I think the request really is, would you be open to seeing some sort of a proposed text amendment, something that's not necessarily site-specific? Because text amendments, they really are not supposed to be site-specific. So, it's really, would you entertain some sort of change? Not really saying... Not necessarily taking that completely off the table, but would you be open to some sort of...
I wouldn't, because it's... You're changing the regulations for one unknown entity. But that's just me.
Oh, no. I mean, this... Obviously, it would not be just for one known entity. I mean, for instance, last night, I went to a place in Southwark, and I was out on the deck next to a lake that was bigger than the restaurant. To me, I seek something like that out. I want outdoor dining. I want to be able to go outside and eat, have a beverage. And usually, when you go to these places, there's like four tables, and they're already taken. And you're like, "Oh, I'm going to have to sit inside. It's bright and sunny." So, I don't... I'm not sure what the reasoning for not allowing more of this is. I mean...
Well, I'm not sure what your reasoning is. I know you're enjoying it, but then you have to look at places that you don't want it. And I understand about a special use permit and what you can put. But I don't hold as much faith in special use permits as you do.
Well, similar to what we did with the outdoor dining that was approved tonight, it was a change that was made, but to allow the amplified audio systems, they had to meet certain criteria. So, I guess if we were... If there was to be a proposal to change that 50% rule, criteria would... criteria would, could be put in there to be met, so that it wouldn't just be based on conditions or what you might determine as appropriate or not.
Maybe it's heavily landscaped, you know, bollards are put in, or things of that nature. I'm just wondering where the, what the reasoning for the 50% is, and, and I just don't know what the reasoning is.
It was an accessory use. That's what it came out as. That's what it started as, that's what it is.
I think a lot of it...
Now you're, you're asking for a cornhole thing, or horseshoe pits that are larger than the restaurant that they're going to. Again, that's just me.
Well, I think that when I, I know for me, when it, when you look at a restaurant, you look at the fact that weather's not always going to cooperate. Time of year is not always going to cooperate, obviously, because it's going to become winter or whatever. So the success of a business also means they have to have enough space inside to accommodate people, as well as outside. So I think in some ways, there was a piece there that was to not just make it only an outdoor event or venue, that also made it indoor as well, to help, I think that was part of some of the reasoning behind it.
Okay.
At least that was my impression.
Okay.
And I think, too, I don't know if, if, I mean, I'd have, Charlie would have to speak to some of his reasons, because I think he has probably more of an idea, and you would know, yeah, more, because of the history of the commission, so...
What are your thoughts?
What are your thoughts?
On why we did, we did 50%?
I think that was before my time, but, uh... Was it? Before my memories time.
Maybe we'll, we'll try to wordsmith something, and, and if you like it, great, and if you don't, you can turn it down.
You know, I, I think that you have to address, you know, the actual, how it relates to, to the adjacent environment, too. And in terms of, you know, it's, it's one of these things where if it's a standalone restaurant, and they have plenty and plenty of space, they have plenty of parking, and they have a significant view of, you know, a waterfall, or a pond, or something of interest, then, you know, I, I think that, you know, we've all gone down to the shore and, you know, wanted to sit at Bill's restaurant, and he's got, you know, 20 tables outside and five tables inside, and everybody wants an outside table, and all the 20 tables outside are taken, and five tables inside, oh, I get stuck over here, you know? I wish he had five more, so I could be sitting out there. So I think that, you know, but, but it's the view. It, it has to have, you know, some reason to, to, for you to go there, because, you know, if you have a significantly larger, you know, exterior seating area than you have an internal seating area, and, you know, there's nothing to see, you know, why sit out there? So I think that, you know, it has to be a venue where it, it actually has some beneficial value to the diner, or whoever's going to be using that area. So I, I think that, you know, in that case, I, I think I would like to see something that could sort of define, you know, that kind of criteria that, you know, and it has to be a successful area, you know? And, and like Mary was saying, I thought she was going down this road, that, you know, if it's a nice sunny day, and you have, you know, 20 tables outside and only five tables inside, that you can fill all, everything all at once. And then when it rains, you, you only get five tables, and, and your income is, is that much less. And restaurants are very, you know, marginal in terms of, you know, whether they're going to make a profit or not, so that if we can improve or enhance the possibility of somebody making a profit because of the fact that he has additional seating that he can utilize during good times, and, and, you know, and he has that ambiance that creates that wonder of, you know, that feeling that you want to actually utilize it, then I think that, you know, we should allow a little larger area.
Well, I think, too, I think the other piece as well is, I think the concern was, well, you know, you start having these games, and then you start getting into the colder weather, and then are they going to put up heaters? Are they going to be putting enclosures down? And can, can we really regulate that? And is that a fire hazard? Is that a concern? Do you know what I mean? Like, so how far is this going to extend? And that's why we always put in, when we do outside dining, where are you going to store the stuff? When are you going to stop serving outdoor?
You have a right to ask that.
So, you know, and that's...
Absolutely. You have the right to ask that now.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying. So those would be kind of the questions.
I like Rick, Rich's theory on the scenic view, you know, like on this Connecticut River, we're all looking for Thompsonville revitalization, a nice restaurant with a view of the river, Powder Hollow, you know, the brewery, maybe some of that building could be. I don't know, but I, I do like your approach to it.
On the other hand, we have that problem down the south end of Enfield Street, where they, their capacity exceeds their parking ability.
Oh, yes.
They're parking on the tree belt, they're parking on the street, they're parking everywhere but where they're supposed to.
But, 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 again, that's what I said, is they have to have adequate, you know, facilities and adequate parking where, and it doesn't...
If you give them the intro, they take that.
Yeah, but, but, but again, you know, I think that, we, we get to actually do a site plan review, so we would know exactly what they're doing, and, you know, what, what would have to be done.
Special use, because of special use.
Someone was being little sidewalks.
Who, special use?
Special use permit.
That was down there?
No, that's what we're saying.
Oh, yeah.
Get for this.
Okay, anything else?
Okay.
Yeah, I just, question on North Street. How did they make out with that? The trucking company on North Street.
I don't, oh, Lori? How did they make out with that trucking company on North Street? Oh.
No, but, I'm sorry I asked.
Because I saw trucks there when I went and looked at the swimming pool, so...
They've got a whole business running out of there.
All right. Um, we're, we're still working on it.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll say that, that we are still working on it.
Okay.
We just were talking with the attorney yesterday, so...
All right. All right, anything else?
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you.